I guess I'm gonna put on my jacket, it's playing freeze out. I love it when it please freeze out. All right, now Dirk. Not that Dirk wants one. Too bad, he gets one all night.
You know, better safe than sorry, right? Stitch in time.
It is, and even when he says he won't, he shows up, so I disable, we'll know.
Well, Devin, please be soon. 10 minutes. 10 minutes.
Yeah. It's an interesting thing. Comes to our open house on Petergate.
Oh, I thought this was 12.
No, well, this curts is the 18th, or 18th. We just got it from Valentine.
Oh, I almost said that, this is the Durango Motor.
Okay.
Open House.
This one's an interesting one, yeah.
And there we go. Hello. Hi there. It is, somebody need to fix their phone?
It's not, they can step into that.
Step in the back, I'll fix my phone.
It is August 2nd, and this is the City Council Study Session. We are starting at 2:15, and we'll go around, I'm Bart Roswilly, the mayor. Jessica, please.
Yeah, Jessica Bjorn.
Olivier Bosmans.
Melissa Youssef. I was expecting Jose. Oh, sorry.
Jose Manuel.
Come back.
And Dirk, are you staying there, or are you gonna be down here just for a moment? Okay, perfect, great, thank you. So, first of all, let me just, I will start with a land acknowledgement, this is my personal statement, it does not reflect the views of this council or other individuals. For thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nations. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community morals. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the Nuchu, Dene, Pueblo, Hopi, multiple Apache bands, and various other tribes and Latinx people who used and stewarded this land. I recognize that indigenous peoples were forcibly removed from their ancestral lands by the US government. It is important to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective, without recognition of those who came before us and who to this day continue to thrive, create, and connect with this one. Thank you for your respect and acknowledging this legacy. So, our agenda today, just making certain everybody's clear, is we will do future new business and review of agenda items, and you have a piece of paper, this, that I'd like you to look at, I'd like to start with that, and now open it up to council. We'll do preliminary fund forecasts, if time allows, we'll take a 10-minute break, and then we'll go into the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission applicants, next steps, and prioritized projects for, I believe it's just airport in, and Parks and Rec, are those the only two?
2005 and 2015.
2005 and 2015, okay, so it's basically the two. And then hopefully, we will finish by 4:45 PM. Thank you. So, Jose prepared for us, or he had, I think, Devin prepare for us, just kind of the list of study sessions, not only that what we've done, but what is proposed, so I wanted folks just to have a chance to look at that and see, maybe we made a recommendation, and something else is more pressing, something like that, so I wanted you just to have a moment to look that over and share any thoughts on the proposed schedule. So, it starts on page four, I believe, going forward. If anybody thinks that something seems more urgent, again, is there any flexibility in the schedule, and then, once we have your thoughts on that, then we'll go into anything new to add.
If, if I can make a request, is to have a discussion on fair share ordinance, I think it's been over a year now, and maybe council can have a little update as well as provide direction, and something that hopefully is more meaningful in the future.
So, could that fit under September 6th, under the housing program? Or would it need, I'm looking at Jose, would it need to be a separate item?
I would need to talk with Eva to see exactly what she's looking to present within those 40 minutes.
Well, part of that is the three-year workforce housing investment strategy that project Maxi did for Economic Alliance, and how we might be able to take advantage of that or use that to inform what we're doing, so I know that's a portion of it, if not.
And then the fair share, we were also looking at not just for home purchase, but also for rental, and I know that staff have been doing some work on that.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah.
Why don't we put the idea out there and then let staff decide where to go?
I think, I just wondered if there's any way to combine anything. Okay, so we've got, is there support around that for fair share, both rental and home? Okay, that's great.
Is November 1st okay, or is it something sooner?
I'm sure there's something more.
Thank you, I would ask council to make a recommendation on which of these items that are before that you would like to move for that.
I'm okay with it on November 1st, as long as staff is aware that we want it, just because looking at the budget and what we have coming up in October, it's already August, so.
All that. May, maybe the presentation should be just if and where we are, not too much detail, so that council can. so that council can give some input before a lot more staff time goes into it. So, a short, short item, and then.
Like on a city operational date?
As long, as long as you can get direction from council.
I think what we have directed him is to come, is to, one, include some kind of recommendations around rental, and if I remember correctly, you had, as I'm looking at Kevin as well, you had put out, we had put out an RFP to help with that, and no one had responded, so.
And in turn, they were working with developers directly and having lots of progress.
Right.
In that regard.
But we were gonna kind of take a step to evaluate the program from what I recall, correct?
Yeah, but we tried, and we, oh, maybe one of their treats or something.
But it's gonna be done internally, yeah.
After, we didn't get any responses back.
I just don't know where we are.
Yeah, let's have Kevin just give us a quick, thank you, thank you, Jose.
So, Kevin Hall, Managing Director of Community Development. I heard a couple, number of things that were all accurate in terms of twice we went on for consulting services that didn't work out, decided to do in the house, meantime, the housing market upticked significantly, staff kind of pivoted a little bit in terms of how to utilize the fair share dollars coming in, so we have a couple of projects in the queue that have or will be utilizing those fair share dollars outside of the Mortgage Assistance Program. Eva's aware of the need for us to come back and have a conversation about the fair share ordinance itself and how it applies. I think if we have a number of weeks, couple of weeks, even November 1st, Eva could certainly come and give you a fairly comprehensible view of where we're at on things. I will tell you, given the amount of housing interest and issues that are occurring over the last six months, eight months since Eva really has gotten on board, the progress on updating of the ordinance has not been significant because of pivots to doing things other ways, but certainly aware of the rental component to it. Eva's certainly aware that the other staff are as well, and we're happy to come and give you an update.
I support November 1st for an update, for to give her time to organize.
Could you, on a ballpark, let us know what opportunities might be lost with some of the things that are in the pipeline, particularly rental units, that wouldn't necessarily right now would be looking at a fair share requirement?
Are you asking for that right now?
Just a sense.
Well, certainly there's.
That would address my urgency.
There's a variety of rental projects that are being proposed as we speak. I would say, though, that if we put in front of them that fair share ordinance now includes rental, those poor projects may change drastically, given the costs associated with it, implying a 16% on rentals, but we do have, you've seen a number of projects that include rental in some component of.
Duty restricted.
Yeah, whether light or heavy duty restrictions, I'm a number of them, and that's the approach they've been taking with ones that have been coming in. But certainly with the new projects that are coming into the pipeline, without that part of the fair share ordinance, certainly there is probably a lost opportunity potentially there.
So, I have a question, because I raised it, I'm willing to trade, something that I suggested and council agreed to. On September 6th, you have organic management.
I think they're the same thing.
And I'm happy to put that down, if that gives you enough time to come back.
Yeah, that would be, that gives us five weeks, four weeks.
And a plan of how we budget the money.
Some thoughts, that's very beautiful.
So, I'm happy to move that down to, I would be interested, because people have been coming to us, you recall that organic management, we had a thousand people sign petition to actually make it and work with it, and I think we have to be looking at what is our commitment to that, and how does that impact the budget? And the workload? But I'd be happy to trade.
September 6th, and then it's kind of, oh, 30 minutes.
So, that would be something like November. Anything on this, on this sheet that we're looking at, I know, Councilor Baxter, you had some that you were gonna look at that you had raised and.
Yeah, I see there's one on there, but I'm not certain the others are still.
Okay. Anything else, just as it pertains to this sheet, this schedule to help staff plan?
Yeah, I guess, just a question, and I'm not stirred up there for discussion, you talked a lot about the reorganization of 2005, various things. Is this something that we want to get on an agenda, or do we want to just keep kicking it down, talk about it later? I mean, no, you know, I just, I just don't know. Do we want to start talking about ideas and options for potential, if we were to go for reorganization, at least while this council is still together, do we want to start talking about identified purposes, you know, I'm just.
I always support that, because we have talked about possibly getting that on the ballot, even in April, so I think I'm not interested in continuing to kick it down.
It's on the agenda, but not until December 6th. Right? I guess that's a transfer policy, but. I just. It's not really where, what we're talking about, what we, not the same, yeah.
About re-upping and what.
Yeah, I just.
Re-upping for what purpose?
If we were, if it were to be up.
Personal conversation, don't you think?
Yeah, I do.
It would be in January that you, the decision would be made, so that it could fit the timing, so you.
I think this group will be able to have that conversation intentionally, whether we're gonna move forward or not, November maybe?
So.
Let's see.
I think, my personal opinion is, we have years.
Well, we have 2023 and we have 2025.
If the council changes and make up, we'll have the same discussion again, so for me, I think it's not a little bit, but if this council feels we have time and.
Even if we don't go out until like November 2023, the council is different, I don't think it's a bad, bad thing to have a, no, to have a discussion and get everyone's, I mean, because the three of us will be here 2023, no matter what, November, whatever, but I think it'd be great to get everyone's input, and then even if it's not till later, we have more input and new ideas potentially, stay the same and change.
Could I suggest on October 18th, I think we're heard three support.
Kim, yeah, I definitely support.
So, could I suggest that possibly the old higher firemen and policeman pension plans, could that be combined with either earlier on October 4th?
My, I think 30 minutes isn't enough time for that, because for this 2023.
I'd say November 4th.
She said at least an hour.
Okay, okay, so we're looking at November 1st.
One hour, yeah. One hour, I think.
I mean, by the time you have 40 hours presentation to give us some. History. Yeah, and then we discuss.
Okay. And, again, looking at this schedule, starting with this, anything else that seems that we need to prioritize?
Can I, I'm just kind of literally thinking aloud, I'm sorry, but it kind of has to be, I'm just saying. I know how important our GNC next steps planning is, and I know we're gonna be talking about it today in our capital planning, but is that anything we have to have on the conversations about at all, or no? I just don't know where we are with that, if we need any further conversations or.
Comments, sir.
Not 2000s.
Not 2000s.
More to time.
We have an RFP out for design of that project.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna be opening the public process, and I don't think there's any urgency in kind of moving to council at this time.
Okay.
Next one, just go ahead and yell from the back.
Okay.
And.
Yeah, true.
I do want to say that, you know, Jose did direct us to the link on the website for how to find this list, I think of meeting or two.
Devin had sent it out.
Oh, Devin had sent it out, but I often think best when I have paper in front of me, so I, we did have the information a while ago, but.
Yeah, I feel like I'm missing some of these emails or something, and maybe it's just for the numbers that we get, but.
Come back with it, we get, this is not in concrete, obviously, we can, but I do want us to every now and then think, look at it this way, so that we're making.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
No, I get, but I also want to see like 30 minutes available, like on occasion, because we have, you know, homelessness or DFP, like I always feel like there's something coming up that like, we might need to like fill in those times, so it's good to have a little free time and not slam them full of every, every meeting.
You just brought up a really good topic, homelessness, I don't know if we need that on here, but we're clearly having discussions with our meetings.
Yeah, and I feel like we have.
I was gonna bring that up under future new business conversation or something, I don't know where to put it, but I've been getting, oh, I've been getting phone calls about people being concerned about the influx of town, including parking and camping on Uso, and we're wondering how we're addressing that and what we're doing. So, are we talking about that now or not? Well, I'm.
We can't talk about it right now, because it's not agenda.
No, 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 I mean. I'm, that's what I'm asking, are we.
Well, I don't know if we need a session, or if we just needed to know how, what's, what's our policy, what are we doing, what, how are we handling it? It could just be an email to council, so that we know, so when people call and ask us questions, I can say, well, here's the steps we take, or here's what we're not doing, or here's what we are giving.
Can you give, can you email?
Perfect.
That would be great.
That'd be great.
Did you have others?
Yeah, so if you remember, we had the lady who came and, and discussed the puppy mill ordinance with us, and I think she sent this email to all of council, but I told her I'd bring it up today to see if council wanted to do an ordinance, and therefore get it on the agenda, or at least discuss an ordinance on the meeting agenda, so we could make a decision then, or what happened like that. So, if anybody was interested in that, I want to make sure that we got it.
And there were nine other cities in Colorado that had.
I, I'm not authority on this, like, you get the same information I do, so.
I was like, I didn't look that in depth into it, but I feel like we don't have any facilities that do this, is it?
Well, she mentioned that the most effective time is to do it before a store wants to come in and do that, then it's harder to do.
So, what are they doing in September 1st there?
They're making them no puppy mill kind of zones, so there'd be no licensing for any kind of.
Puppy mills are high breed, caged, not well cared for. That's interesting. Okay.
Is there a board or staff or department person that could make a recommendation, and then we can maybe be more efficient in our time?
Maybe, yeah, Humane Society, it feels like, yeah. So, would one recommendation be to ask, have staff get the view from the Humane Society and the mayor to this, and and then come back.
For communities that don't have it yet.
And maybe get more information on, like, like what Kim was just saying, you know, the, the language around it, and then language around what communities are outlined.
Yeah, this is, the Humane Society of the United States recommended this ordinance right here, she sent it, so I actually brought it to some place.
So, I recall it actually outlawed the sale of books of the city.
Animals.
We outlawed the sale of. Okay, altogether.
Stores. Stores, not just free, not just freezers.
Not full, but.
Do they currently do it?
No, and the, but.
Oh, but she's saying do it before.
Before someone comes in, the big chain wants to come in or something, and the other interesting thing that I found about this was that stores get more revenue if they don't have, if they don't sell animals, because they're selling product that's very cost-effective for them, so. I don't know that we have a threat here, but it, I don't know, it's not an ordinance that would, I don't think would hurt us in any way, so.
I don't know if we have a threat here either, I certainly, I think we all would care for the humane treatment of animals, and so if it, but I would want to understand more what we're doing in relation with other municipalities and what our role is, and things like that, but.
We have to stack time, costs, go into something that we might never utilize, I don't.
I actually would support learning more about it, having it go in, because I think it's a proactive stance that, you know, we're just not gonna do this, so, you know, I'm not looking at it being a heavy lift, no, and I'm looking at, Jose.
My guess is we end up having to partner with a, either Humane Society or someone to give a, I guess, a detailed description of this, because you don't really have any types of, we don't have an animal department, animal control department or anything like that, so. With the county, but you know, I mean, as someone that could help with us on that side, so it would be a partnership in conjunction with another entity that would probably be able to be in a better position to provide that expertise, expert advice in these areas.
Okay. Do we have, so.
Well, so are you suggesting information on it, and then, then we decide whether we put it on an agenda?
Yeah.
So, be an email, or kind of a description?
Local Humane Society, maybe the, the animal control.
And then, once we get that information, we can decide whether we want to.
Do you have any others?
I'm not right now.
I think you had mentioned about dog parks at one point, in the parking, in the, that just be included when we get a report from Parks and Rec, what, if there are plans for any additional dog parks, I think you mentioned that.
Maybe, maybe that's one of the things that's not, I don't know, I don't remember all stuff.
I think dog parks falls on the Parks and Rec, so maybe.
Just a report.
Send an email to Parks and Rec.
Yeah. Okay.
Is this a non-topic that you want to recommend?
I see Terry taking notes, I think.
Yeah, that's, we need to send an email to the board.
Okay, anybody else have other items for new business, which would require a study session? Not a recommendation, not a. Okay, is there anything else? Okay, let's move on, I like it. Let's see, we're gonna have Devin doing the preliminary fund forecast and. Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss you?
Yeah, well, I thought you were talking about purely the agenda.
Oh, no.
Future business item, which is about the 250, 251 County Road project. It was presented to us and the county commissioners last Thursday, I believe, and, and it had feedback from the Infrastructure Advisory Board. To me personally, this is an extremely important multimodal, long-term vision project, and I asked the council at the time if it would not be beneficial for us to have multimodals advisory board feedback. So, my question is, if this council is supportive of asking this project to be presented to the multimodal advisory board for their recommendations.
If I can.
So, not, not an update, but.
I have, I've thought a lot about this concept, and I, I believe that 250 and 251 should flow into 32nd fairly seamlessly. And we don't know what 32nd is going to look like yet, I mean, there's plans out there, but we don't, we have no decisions that we made, so. And I talked to Jose about this, so I was wondering if the concept of what we're trying to do with 250 and 251 is to bring that section of road into the city in a manner in which it's been upgraded to minimum city standards, so we'll take care of it. So, what if we did a plan estimate of what it would cost to bring it only up to minimum city standards, so that we could accept it? And that's what we share with the county. And then, we do as a city, a full robust review of 32nd and that section, which will then become 32nd, I guess like 251, so that is, we're doing it as one piece and not two projects that may not have consistency or continuity between them. We get the half of it from the county, and the county doesn't really want to pay more than bringing it up to standards for us to bring it into the city, that's been the conversation all along, so I'm wondering if that might, it'll get it into the city quicker, because we won't have to do the work in order to bring it into the city, because we'll do the work after we bring it into the city, and then it'll be done to our standards, the way that we envision a bigger plan.
So, are you, thank you, are you suggesting that the staff do this and bring it back to council for consideration? Or are you suggesting that it go to both the IAB, because they, it'll be, right now, the proposal is to expand it out of 2019 sales tax? What body would receive this information on, you know, what standard?
Well, I think obviously the two boards work together on it, and the standards are our road standards, they're not, they're not something that multimodal, this is, we're not going to build it that way, right, that's not the, that's not my vision, we would build it the way that the city really wanted to build it, rather than building it in a way that just allows us to bring it into the city. I think we can do the right thing by it, by doing it in this manner, rather than doing just a slap-together concept. Not that it was slapped together, I don't mean that way.
Just a clarifying question, so you're, if I understand you correct, you are basically suggesting we put price tag only on upgrading the road to city standards, and then not do anything, take the money, the 50% from the county, and then we do it differently?
Yes.
You mean, oh, we upgrade.
We upgrade and make it a better road than what minimum standards would be and it would be consistent with the rest of thirty-second street. So we do it, we do it on the same timeline. But it's done, it's done to the standards that you're asking. And well, not necessarily all the things you're asking for, but it's done through the process that you're asking for.
So I think, so.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, you can finish.
I, so I guess you support, based on what you're saying, that the actual project goes through the multimodal advisory board?
She didn't say that.
So I am, I am suggesting. I, I am suggesting that if, if we support this concept and the county agrees to it, that then we can take that entire section, the entire road and put it through the process that's deemed necessary to make it to be to the standards that the city really envisions that entire stretch of road being. Do we do the study with the county as well? No. So we just say to the county, look, here's what it would cost to bring it up to minimum standards. We'll split the bill with you. We'll um write an IGA with you or whatever to prove that we're going to do this in the next three years. Use your money, we'll do that, and then we'll just bring it to the city to smooth it right now. And you guys are done with it, it's off your plate, you don't have to think about it anymore, and then we'll decide.
Yeah, but so when will it be done? So here's my concern is that, hi, this is your cost for a, this is what I want. But now are the RCIP doesn't even have money in it for thirty-second for ye- years, I think. And so wait, hang on, don't argue all, like, I'm sorry, just because I don't want to argue. And so uh my thing is, one, can we talk to staff also quick because I saw them jump up and see how different is maybe, I know multimodal hasn't seen it. We don't have the full vision for thirty-second, but how different is this plan that we have already done from what potentially we'll see down thirty-second? Because I can't imagine that it, like, the plan that we saw could be that much change from that little road and like what options we possibly have there anyways to what's gonna happen down thirty-second and why there still couldn't be flow with it. Um, and, and so that way we can get that project done and we can, because we don't have the money for the whole stretch of road. This is my concern.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just fine.
I'd like to make a point of order, just I'm concerned that this has not been agendas, agendaized and that we're now into a level of discussion that is not within this appropriate timeframe. So I, I want to say what I can hear is that maybe we need a discussion on thirty-second street as a study session.
And two fifty.
And two fifty, um, perhaps. And I don't think the question of uh, is it, where does it fall? Is it multimodal or back? I think the study session perhaps can also address some of those questions. Is there support for, maybe, and keeping in mind any of this, and I, and I do, any of this would need to involve the county. And then it, they are going into budget session, so any delay would impact. So I think we need, if we're going to have a discussion on this among council rather than in an open room where we're working with our partners. The question is, is there, is there a support for that kind of discussion?
So that's my point, is if we, we, there's really no reason why the county has to be involved in the design of the road. It, it's only, the point is that their desire is to bring it, have it be brought into the city. And in order to, they would have given it to us years ago if they could have given it to us in the shape it's in right now, but we wouldn't take it because we want to be able to maintain it and do all the right things to it. So it's, they don't need to be involved in the design of it.
I understand that. I do think though that we're at a point now where we're discussing something in, in a level of detail.
So where do you want to go with this?
I asked, is there support to have a study?
Can I uh go back? I brought up future new business in that I would like to have this council make a decision or recommend a direction if multimodal advisory board can review and make recommendations on the project, the two fifty, two fifty-one project. And that is my request to council.
So I'll, I'll jump in. Uh, I know, understand, we've heard it's gone twice, not in this forum, although I appreciate Sarah being here because I'm also aware of what we have to do with our timing and not having this go on to an agenda, look like we're, it wasn't agendaized. I would like to hear from Sarah at some point, either in writing, what the process has been and what the discussion has been of the two times that it's gone. That's my one suggestion. And to also summarize and move this on, I would be, I would support a study session where we talked about options for thirty-second and two fifty and how we might discuss that. So I'm gonna go around and then I'm gonna move us on because we do need, and we have a full schedule today.
Yeah, I, I, I like the idea of having a study session to discuss um thirty-second and two fifty, two fifty-one. Thirty-second doesn't have to be built right away. So I think it's more the design concept of making them consistent and then being able to um have the county go ahead and do their fifty percent funding. So I would support that.
I support it as well. I mean, I, I support understanding more fully uh to Olivia's point.
Yes.
As to uh the involvement with the multimodal board, I'm not up to speed on that and so I'd, sure.
And that can be.
Yeah.
So.
No, I'm. Um, so I, I, it seems a little bit maddening that we're at a point of where, like, it's been so long that we've been working on this project and we're at plans and now we're like, let's stop and redo it. And so I don't support that. I said, I want our staff to feel like they're, I want to enable them to get through the process and to do their job and, and their work and then come to us like for approval, not keep going back and back and back and back. I support seeing like how multimodals been a part of this and how they visioned it going through to thirty-second, sure. Um, but I don't need a study session personally to hear about it or chat about it. It's not my expertise. Um, that's multimodal and CIP's expertise. It's not my, I mean, I'll sit here and listen to them and be like, it looks pretty great, good job. But it's not my expertise to tell like what we should have. They know the budget, they know the flow, they know the plan, Sarah. Like, I just feel like they're more than capable to handle it considering what we have in front of us.
Well, the only other point I would add to that is that I agree, I don't want to hold up any.
Yeah, that's my issue.
Process, like you were suggesting with the counties. So I, yeah, so I'm, I, yeah, I'm, I'm a little perplexed on this. I might take, re, retake mine back just because I just, I'm, I'm just not really sure where we're going with this, I guess.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna come back and around, uh, Olivia, you wanted to say something.
Yeah, my, my, my position is that I, we can have a study session, but that does not change the fact to have a study session where we discuss this topic, to have good recommendations from the board that I feel strongly is very appropriate for this type of project to get their feedback and their feelings from the community because they represent different parts of the community so that their recommendations are for us to utilize. If you want a study session, maybe, maybe there is no need for a study session.
So I, I, I do think Sarah will give us the summary, she'll supply it, she's the staff, we is the staff to that. And so having gone before the multimodal at least twice, we'll get that, that information. I, I wanted, I want to alter what I originally said, which is I am concerned about slowing down the budget process with the county. And so I'm wondering, and but I also recognize that for some folks, maybe seeing the plan in that meeting might have been the first time we really had a chance to look at it and to really dig in. So I have a question of Jose and I see Alison, Will, you be presenting that CIP? It's not gonna be part, it's gonna be part of today's CIP, no, you'll be presenting that in two weeks.
Sixteen.
The sixteen. So the question I might have, keeping in mind the county and everything, would it be for the conversation of at least getting a better sense of what it looks like? Would it make sense to allow sufficient time on the sixteenth for us to see, to really review that rather than just a cursory, here it is?
Just not even like review it, but just like, here's the flow that we're thinking of. And this is like, I can't imagine that our staff would be like so siloed that they're not thinking about it. Like, you know, I, so just.
It's very different than, than the current thirty-second proposals.
Does that work, that on the sixteenth we'll get a real sense for us to see the plans, to really look at it? Because when you're looking at that screen as it was, it's hard to see.
It was hard to see.
And so, so then that helps us with the, from the policy point of view and then that discussion could come up still in a timely manner before we meet with the county and they go into the budget. Good. Thank you. Okay, we are not gonna take a break. We will only take eight, well, not take a ten minute break. Um, but I am gonna provide this, we will provide, oh no, we're not, we're behind schedule, sorry. Preliminary fund forecast, twenty minutes. Devin.
Good afternoon, your council, um, Development Budget and Strategic Plan Officer. It's been in the Shamrock Spring here, so we can see the preliminary fund um presentation. Uh, great, so thank you. So um, our team has been working to develop the preliminary fund forecast um for various different reasons. Um, but the, the real purpose of this item is for um uh council to have improved decision-making ability, um, maintaining any fiscal discipline, um, delivering essential community services and then as well for staff to receive some feedback of changes that are requested by council in the forecast. And so when we were building these forecasts, we followed GF A recommendations in building forecasts. And so we started with defining the assumptions. So um, based on our current environment, um, with higher inflation for goods and the, uh, goods and services in the short term, followed by um a federal reserve acceptable inflation rate of two percent. Um, so throughout the entire forecast, you'll see goods and services are at that three point one percent in twenty twenty-three, followed by that two percent in the out years. Um, so the forecast uh does also assume a three percent cost of living adjustment year over year um in addition to the um current projected increase in insurance, which is projected at seven percent year over year. Um, forecasts also have been developed around strategic plan goals in mind. So with some of the funds where the funding is insufficient, there could require policy direction from council on how to find some of those areas. Um, so next up there is really gathering that information. So we worked with departments to provide insights into activities for their own departmental revenues and expenditures, um, operating in capital um as well as any additional information that comes from departments will be incorporated as information comes available. So the cost allocation plan is one of, an example there where that will be added in, uh, changed based on um when finance provides the recommendation there. Um, and then when we're thinking about the analysis, so we used a couple of different um areas and analysis. So uh we used uh explorations. So really what that is looking at is historical revenue data um to kind of predict future behavior um by projecting the trend forward. We did the regression econometrics, um specifically when we were looking at sales tax. Um, and so that's a, that statistical procedure that's um based on the relationship between um the county population in San Juan County and La Plata County, um, as well as the CPI. Um, and then also the knowledge-based forecasting, which is um consists of using the forecaster's home knowledge about where we're at and feel for the situation. So those were the um several different areas to be utilized in building out those forecasts.
That's a good question.
Sure.
The GF, uh, GF, GF A recommendations is, are those current or is that an older recommendation? And I ask that question because we all know that inflation is not at that level now. But maybe when the GF A recommendations, if that's a reporter's recommendation five years ago, we were.
So we actually um looked at what the office, uh, what the Federal Office of Budget was projecting for twenty twenty-three. That's how we inlaid that three point one percent. That was their latest projection is three point one percent for inflation in twenty twenty-three.
When was that option?
Um, that was the last quarter end. So I can, I can pull that up and share that with council if that would be helpful. Yeah. Um, so and when we're looking at GF A recommendations, their recommendation is really to find the assumptions. And so this is the assumptions that be included in the forecast. Um, and then uh that federal reserve acceptable rate of inflation, uh, that's the two percent that, that's considered federal re- reserve acceptable. Now, if you look at the trends of previous years, it's not always two percent. Sometimes it's higher, sometimes it's lower depending on if we're in recessionary environment. Um, two-thirds of economists have uh stated that we are probably looking at a recessionary environment, um, probably middle of next year, which would really drive down that inflationary number. So um that's the, where we got our, kind of our backup information about um what we were trying to project for twenty-three specifically.
It would also drive down the revenue if you go to recession.
Yes, so um you'll see that especially as it pertains to the general fund with the sales tax revenue. Um, we did project a small dip compared to this year um in next year's budget process. Um, and I will add, since we're on the subject of sales tax, we presented this to Strategy and One for Finance yesterday.
Yeah.
Um, their recommendation was that we were a bit too conservative on the sales tax estimates. And so they would like us to take another um blush at that. We used the modeling from Fort Lewis.
Go ahead, Jessica.
No, I was gonna say, so just like, because they had, um, it was Gary, Gary Masner, I think, was the one that really pushed this. And he was saying, you know, in business, it's fifty, you do a fifty-fifty split, like it's a fifty percent shot, you're gonna get it, fifty percent shot. Like, you'll, you'll meet it or a fifty percent shot you won't. And my comeback to that was, you know, and he's like, what does council think? And I'm like, well, I can't speak to for council. So it'd be good, I think, to know, like, play it conservative like Devin is, knowing that uh like two-thirds of economists think we're going into recession next year and so we're budgeting appropriately or kind of do that fifty-fifty model. And my comeback was, I own businesses and sure, with my money in my businesses, I might go into something fifty-fifty. But with, you know, taxpayers' dollars and the city budget, I probably would be more conservative as a city councillor with that. And so, you know, and, and so it was just kind of discussion and um them bringing that up. And so I wanted to kind of give a little background so it gets to where, why they were pushing to maybe not be so conservative.
So having inflation go over and recession happen, it's not, they're not necessarily, they can work together.
Yeah.
They've had those times. So it can be an inflationary period and a recession at the same time, so.
Yeah, we discussed that as well and.
My concern, my concern, I was just gonna ask about the self that, is what's lost by being too conservative? And it's, those are those big ticket items to, maybe it's to purchase something, you know? And what I was gonna. So, so I understand the balance, but um like this year, we're way ahead of sales tax. And so what is lost that we want to try to achieve because we have been careful?
And I think of a piece to add, that's all Fab made their recommendation. They said in twenty-three and twenty-four, sure, um, stay conservative since it's anyone's, it's a, it's a difficult time to forecast right now. They said in the out years in twenty-five, they would rather see a three percent. So um they would rather see a three percent assumption applied to the sales tax starting in twenty-five. So if council is comfortable with that, we can certainly add in that three percent um assumption to sales tax and reflect that through all of the sales tax funds. Um, but the.
Some piece what? Matches inflation.
Essentially.
Yeah, essentially you're matching inflation.
Uh, three percent versus.
Sorry. One and a half.
It was one and a half.
It was one and a half yesterday, yeah. Yeah, so instead of, or maybe find a middle ground there. I don't, you know, I don't know.
So that's part of the discussion I wanted to have with council, um, and I'll get into that a little bit in the next slides is, you know, the next step for these forecasts would be to in, upload them into Overdo so that we're able to show what happens, what actually happens from the financial system and then annually update the forecast year over year based on what projects happen, um, where expenses change, where revenues change so that we're consistently providing not just a one-time, ten-year forecast, because as, as council is aware, um, the numbers get old very quickly. Um, and so it's, it's really a financial plan and a, and a process. So um that's really the direction we're looking from council is, did we go too conservative in areas? Do we, but how can we change the forecast so that it's comparable to financial?
And another thing to, that we, that they, we were talking about yesterday was typically, sales tax is mostly a product of um.
Discretionary spending.
Discretionary spending, I was gonna say, I couldn't think of the right word. And so that isn't quite affected by recession, it's more affected by inflation because that's, those are people that typically experience inflation over, most of the time, not all the time, obviously, but. And so that was another topic, that is still like, why maybe we want to push upwards off, off of that one and a half percent? I'm not necessarily saying that council directs to go to three percent, like, totally, like, totally all the way, but I don't.
Well, to that point too, as prices increase, you're collecting more sales tax. So sometimes people aren't buying as much, which is what it is.
Yeah.
But sales tax is still increased, the official, which is costing. Makes sense.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to make certain what is there support for pushing a little bit more on the revenue side?
Well, why don't we, maybe we should look through our.
Yeah.
Okay, I noticed you have a printout of that. I would have liked to have been able to um edit mine so I could print them any way I wanted to and I couldn't do that. So maybe you could send a version where. So maybe you could send a version where.
We could do that, or we could print for you, whatever you prefer.
Well, I think.
Thank you.
That didn't price was gonna be this big.
Yeah, I, well, I know. I didn't want to, I didn't want to do that, but I did want to be able to choose my print area, for example.
Okay. Yeah, we can certainly make it editable.
Thank you.
Our intent was to make sure that, because this is a public facing document, if any person wanted to come in there and change things, you certainly could, but we can share a link so that you're able to print or edit or.
And it won't change what anybody else sees.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we can share.
That'd be great. Thank you, Devin. Keep going. Thank you.
No problem. Okay. So then the other component that we wanted to bring up as it pertains to the fund forecast, because obviously a big component that we're looking at is the revenues versus the expenditures and how we arrive at that any fund balance. So we just wanted to highlight that we're just trying to clarify and explain, and Jessica, or sorry, excuse me, councillor Piole said this well, that the government finances are different than business in that the private sector financing. And so there really has, you know, there's a common misconception that fund balance is a separate cash account and therefore corresponds to the government's bank balance. So as we're looking at these fund forecasts, we wanted to provide that level of clarification. There's also a difference between assets and liabilities, misequity, and so in governmental accounting, misequity is called fund balance. And so then the other component too is fund balance is really intended to serve as a measure of financial resources available in a government fund. So what is available for us to budget in the future years? What's available for us to include in a mid-year budget and things of that nature? So I wanted to add that point of clarification as well. And then finally, for the preliminary fund forecast, just wanted to provide the narrative around what the different cell colors meant in the forecast. And I previously mentioned this. So this is the process that will continue is that self app make recommendations, council changes and recommendations. After this, we will add the forecast into Open Gov, which will alleviate a lot of, because this is a line item forecast. It'll alleviate, you'll be able to filter by just personnel, just by charges and services, have it in there at a department level. So it'll make it really nice and think we just didn't want to do that preliminarily. So it'll be really great in Open Gov once we get it in there. And then the process will be part of, this will be a review annually for our budget process. So as we're moving into the budget process, we can look and see where we're projecting in those out years and things of that nature. So did, is it the desire of council that we dive into the funds at this point? I know for time's sake, we did also include, yeah, we did include some more time on September sixteenth, I believe, if we need to continue the discussion then as well.
You have a summary of the, of the fund balance effects? And I wonder if that's a good place to start.
On the fund balance effects, that was actually for the
The next.
Resolution for the mid-year.
And I will say that self app did dive into all the funds yesterday and, you know, we provided feedback to Devon where we thought, but it was overall pretty easy to follow. And I don't know, I thought it was easy to follow.
Well, on the direction you need from council, we talked about whether or not it's too conservative. Is that something you want to sense up from now? Or so that when you come back again, or what direction were you hoping to get today?
I think that's, that's a helpful component. We can certainly look at the revenues to see if those are conservative. There's some areas perhaps, maybe we could just discuss those if time allows. Otherwise, as I mentioned, September sixth, we did dedicate some additional time for this discussion, knowing that it's a big one. But we, there, there's several funds in the forecast. So the housing fund is one that doesn't have a dedicated source of revenue, therefore it hits a cliff. So if we wanted to talk about those areas, this is a, okay.
Can I ask one good question before we go into that? What are the yellow and the pinkish colors?
Green and blue? No, there's yellow.
Yellow and green.
There is some yellow in there. I believe those are tying back to the area where we have need additional information from departments.
Like water rates changing, I think, was one of them we knew and there is.
Yeah. Cost allocation plan, that's something that finance is working on currently. We have those numbers, we'll add those in there as well as part of consideration. We just didn't want to continue to delay putting out the forecast when we're moving into budgets succession, and we will have the cost allocation numbers in the budget for twenty three as well.
So yellow is basically still in progress, is that?
What's that?
Is the yellow and it's highlighted in yellow, it means it's not, it requires some more information in pink ones.
Um, so the pink ones, is there a specific fund that you were looking at?
I just happened to open the water funds.
Okay. Down here? So what that's calculating is if there is a twenty, there's not a fund balance policy for the water fund currently. Finance is working on that once the water rate study is complete. But what this is projecting is if there was a twenty five percent fund balance policy, it'll start creating areas where this goes into the negative. And so the water fund is an area where it starts going into the negative. And that happens in, I want to say, twenty twenty six due to the large CIP projects that are included. And so there's a, there's, that's one of the funds that, you know, does kind of climb into that area because of the large CIP projects.
And let me just add, from the IAP meeting, which we had last week, we had asked that staff present both a plan of not using such all of the money for some big projects, but rather a bonding or some other option, because it, it puts a lot of emphasis on one project being paid for out of reserves. And there's a question around that. And again, the question comes into, when is it appropriate to use debt and when should we be using? And again, I don't know if that's a question that the self app will be looking at, but that will impact your projections significantly.
For the next self app meeting, we will be bringing forward a debt management policy, which will be for citywide purposes, which will hold into the IAP's waters or pieces, but it will be a citywide policy. And we're gonna win bond when you.
I, I say that because with the water and having just come out of this meeting, that fund balance would look very different if you did it differently.
Sure. Absolutely.
So that's why it's not there yet, I don't think.
Right. This is just showing a cash funded model if we were just to continue with the rates. As Cynthia mentioned, that's kind of that pervy area where they would determine that debt, when to debt or when to bond.
That's not till October though, so.
And that's what, that's what this is good for, is to go, oh, okay, you need to think about this a little differently. Yeah. And I, I want to say that I am so impressed with the change in how we're looking at things. So we're forecasting forward and you're doing it on a continuous basis. So as each year goes by, it forecasts into the next year, it might change itself, or might not. But this is the kind of forward thinking that about finances that I think makes communities successful. And obviously, when I came on council, we didn't have this type of way of looking at things. And so I just want to say how much I appreciate it, all the hard work that you have all put into it.
Appreciate that. Absolutely. I wanted to take a moment to give a big thank you to Devon and Cynthia and your teams for placing this together. When, I know for the three of you councillors when I was hired, one of the big things I talked about was a ten-year plan and forecast.
That's right.
And took us a little longer than we anticipated, understanding the current conditions that we were in, but we're here now. And one of the greatest things about this is flexible, it is always continuously moving. It's not something you approve. And it's set stone as we learn things over months, as we learn things on, unfortunately, never a pandemic or whatnot. It allows us to pivot and find out if we make changes in one year, what is that effect that goes through in years out? Obviously, probably after two years out, it gets really more of a, looking through a magic eight ball. But it still at least gives us something that we're looking at and see where we're at and if we're hitting on it or not, and to adjust. So it's a, it's a wonderful tool, absolutely exceeds expectations, especially going through Open Gov. And so I want to have a moment to thank Cynthia and Devon for you and your team's hard work in putting this together.
Devon, are there, thank you. I do want to recognize that you've come a long way. Are there things now that you want us to either look at and provide some comment, or at least look at future so that we're ready when we, when you come back to us?
Maybe just a couple of areas to highlight. One of the bigger ones that I wanted is, was the self insurance fund. So the self insurance fund, you'll see that that starts going into the negative pretty quickly. And that has to do with that seven percent that's currently being projected by our benefits broker. I did want to say that our HRT looks annually to determine plan changes. So to determine whether or not the current benefit structure will be the only one offered, what other benefit structures could be put forth to mitigate some of those costs, because that would then affect every other fund.
So I raised, I made a note on that one. I thought we were gonna go in mid-year of next year with a recommendation or something that you, we've got the platinum policy right now, and what would it look like?
We are, we are continuously looking at our health plan offerings in the process. It's probably a two to three year change, but changing the process of what we're offering and how we're offering them, looking at health savings accounts, high deductible plans as well to offer into it. So it is something we're continuously monitoring. We just haven't made that formal finalized decisions, which is why in the forecast, you're not going to see it showing right now because that decision hasn't been done and approved. But we are working on our HRT business, working in changing those as we go forward.
Actually, I'll say, in my experience, it has changed already, because I, we were offered different plans for the share and different rates and all that. So I already see change coming there.
So that's a point that I wanted to make note of, is this is based on our current employees, our current workforce, whether they're family, elections, singles, single plus one, or dependents, and things of that nature. And as those change, that's the beauty about this being Open Gov, is it'll integrate, and it'll change, and we'll be able to reflect that. So that's one of the bigger pieces because I talked about the housing fund. Currently, the great funding is what would cover the costs of any of the housing projects. And yes, it would have to be great, so it would cover those items. The yellow in here is reflecting a request to add a position, a housing coordinator position mid-year of twenty twenty three. So there's some areas in here where you can see where the funds start to, you know, creep into the negative and where those items would require either policy direction from council or things of that nature, how to fund some of these areas. So I think that's the biggest components. We talked about water. And so we need, again, we can certainly take a deeper dive into some of these forecasts if that's council's desire. Or we can have the direction that we can really get the sales tax to make sure and really look at some of the inflationary environment.
And just a quick question, will the self app be meeting before you come back? So we will have a preliminary recommendation on debt?
No, October third is our meeting. So no, we won't do meeting before she comes back.
But I think, again, that's the beauty of these forecasts. We can continuously update them and make changes to them. I think another component here too, and we think about the conservative environment, is in the mid-year, you'll see that there is a request if council approves it to increase our projected sales tax for twenty twenty two as an offset to the costs that were included. And so there's always that opportunity in this unprecedented environment that we're in for twenty three. If we were to go conservative, try and balance the budget, then there's always the opportunity from it here.
What point will we dive into some of these specific funds? I mean, I look at the housing fund, for example, I see a negative number for twenty twenty one. Oh, that's interesting. Affordable housing fee, fair share. And then the twenty twenty one is not.
Right. And that was historically, and Kevin or Cynthia, you can speak further to this, but historically, some of the expenses were paid out of the revenue account for other contracted services. And so that's why you're seeing the negative on the revenue there.
So if, and this is a general question, but if contractor, builder basically negotiates with community development to pay fair share ordinance fee, but then the agreement is they waive the fair share ordinance fee and return for, what are they, deprestation? Would that show up as revenue and as an expense? The fair share ordinance fee paid and then coming out as an expense as in the deprestrated housing investment? And the reason I ask it is because it distorts the numbers of a dozen, because to me, the fair share housing fee amounts are very small. From, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but this is something I that I'm wondering.
Is that in the practice that we do all that?
Maybe I'm not entirely clear of the question.
Like the River View Apartments with the URA, where the fair share housing is being used this way and that way. And then this is, there's like three different connections between funds. Are they, how are they being shown on the financial statements?
So if we're talking about, for example, is that the question with the URA? Thank you. So with the URA, you can see here under other contracted services, that amount was
Not the URA specifically, the River View Apartments process, what we're doing with them.
So are you doing general entries?
No. The fair share fees that come in, in revenue.
Revenue where?
It would come in as fair share first, but then it would go into the housing.
In the housing, okay.
And then, and then if we're giving it to, let's say, homes fund, or we're putting it into a project, it would go out of expenditure, expenditure out of the housing fund into those projects.
So that's how it'll work with the, with the River View condominium project.
Well, then you have the URA component of that, which is I'm not prepared to be clear on that with you at this moment. We can certainly get that processed, but I don't want to miss you.
Okay, that, that's great. So just so we understand how that works, that'd be great.
Yeah. And at the basic level, any of the projects that were slated that Eva's been working on, the revenue comes in for the fair shares and then it goes out under other contracted services, which is why you see especially twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, any of those really large dollar amounts showing up there. So that's where those housing related projects are coming out of.
So I'm, I will at a certain point ask you to give better insight because the affordable housing fee, the fair share seems to be very low on this fund in the future compared to the expenses that go out to because one project alone will be this amount.
Yes. And so what we have in here for the out years, because of the unpredictable revenue, it's been unpredictable because of the way the projects come in. So we have that listed as flat. I know Eva was digging through and working through to see all of the different agreements that we have in some of those out years. And so we can certainly see how we model that better. But it is, it just depends on when a project, and that's what we always talk about as typical.
Because there's no steady revenue stream associated with housing. Basically, the fair share, highly variable based on redevelopment. Same thing with the transfer fees. Houses stop selling for a couple of years, and then the transfer fees stop coming in. So highly variable as well. We have projections on the transfer fees, but I think what happened in the last two years was not anticipated. So that's why it's real difficult to project too far out on revenues associated with housing.
And you answered my question. I think, to me, the concern I have, or the concern, the assurance I want to get is that anything that is negotiated where transfer fees are offset or deprestrated out, it still show up as an income as well as an expense. So that we have accurate numbers from history moving forward. My little question is, at what point are we going to dive into some of these fund structures?
So I'm gonna suggest that it's not gonna be today, because we are over schedule. So you're coming back to us.
September sixth, would it be comfortable for council to come with questions and we can just dive into the specific ones where there's questions? Would that be possible?
Maybe even questions before we get to the.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Questions. So let's, let's say that we're gonna look through this and.
But I also make sure like it's questions related to the forecasting, because this isn't, this is a forecast, like that's one thing you don't, like, it's not budget. It's not, that's in October. I guess it's forecasting and like helping her have direction for the forecast. And I get it's related, but like all that detail can come also for the budget, for like immediate budget stuff, just because I don't want to be so bogged down. It's important to get forecasts, you know.
Very good point. So will you be sent, you'll be sending us a document that to council vectors, we can play with and move around?
Yes.
And then we, as council, will send in our questions in advance so that we can make most best use of this time. So you're prepared? Perfect. I'm gonna move us on to the next. Thank you, Devon. And again, to Devon and Cynthia, I'm seeing this was an enormous undertaking and um. Well, uh, well, many thanks for your, well, your good work. Okay, next, we're gonna keep moving, is Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission applications.
Applicants.
And next steps, yeah. Eleven applicants.
Yes. Good afternoon, council. Um, so we've been soliciting applications for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, I think since mid-April. And um, kind of at the beginning of the summer, our applications were a little low. But you know, in the last couple of weeks, we've gotten quite a few more in. So we have a total of eleven applicants now and um been in contact with them and just letting them know that today. Uh, council will have information on my act in front of them and can make a decision uh to schedule interviews for the teams. Um, or because of the modest amount of applications uh the past couple of years, uh, council has chosen just to place the teams onto my act and let us hit the ground running. So a couple of options uh before you guys on how you want to proceed. But um, I think after you guys make a decision, we'll all schedule an orientation with them and uh just see what their academic schedules are looking like along with their extracurriculars uh for this school year and try to set some meeting times and uh get going on projects. So.
I noticed it's on the consent agenda for tonight. And so my, uh, I personally would support appointing all of them as we've done in the past couple of years because I think it's, it's been great, good participation, and we're all good.
Yes. Great. I support that as well. I support.
And I just want to thank you for the good work you do. I have my daughter on there last year and the other one applied as well. So I'm not sure if I have to abstain during that vote. I'm gonna say, good job.
It might be a good idea.
You might need to, yeah.
We might need to pull that one off the consent agenda, just so you could do that and have it before.
Yeah.
I think that's great.
Yeah, thank y'all.
Listen, tune in.
Right.
From our averages of the past, right?
Yep, we're up a couple from last year, but um still a functional number, you know, if they need to vote on something. And um, they've all been pretty responsive via email so far. So I think, I think they're, you know, if given the opportunity, ready to hit the ground running.
Does that mean you have to have seven there for a forum?
Um, I think we would need probably to, uh, that sounds about right.
Six or seven.
Yeah, thankfully, thankfully, there's usually not too big of controversial items they're voting on. It's just really collaborative and teamwork based, but um.
Right.
Yeah. But I think, I think it's teed up to run well this year. Um, I think they go back to school uh the beginning of September. So we would host a uh an orientation probably a week before the, you know, the week's starting, so.
Or which is twenty third.
Very good.
Depends what school.
Yeah.
I got some work to do though.
So someone will take this up, well, probably it'd be you taking it up the consent agenda since you're making up a per se.
Well, if I have to abstain, then maybe someone else should, well, because I'll walk out. You have to, no, I just don't vote, I guess.
Well, you pulled off the consent agenda, explain why that you're standing and then, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, we're just a little bit behind schedule.
Actually, we're right on schedule.
Oh, yeah, we are. Very good. There you go. Um, Devon, you're gonna come back to us with capital projects.
Absolutely. Um, this time if Tony's there or you wanna join, that might, might be helpful um for the conversation. Um, so Devon Schmidt, Budget and Strategic Plan Officer. Um, and this is the discussion on the board prioritized capital projects um for consideration for the twenty twenty three project. So I did want to highlight on this first slide here, um, this is showing how the budget is being developed by strategic plan uh goal. And so you can see um there are dollar amounts there for diversity, equity, inclusion, enhanced ability, intensive place, as well as effective pressure number. Um, and then it has the, the particular funds that we'll be discussing today. So council received um in their study session packet, the summary of projects um by fund. Um, and so really the, the purpose of this um item is for council to have the opportunity to discuss board prioritized staff proposed capital improvement projects and provide staff the direction on projects um that are to be slated, included in twenty twenty um for the twenty twenty three budget, which we brought to council in October. So that's really um the purpose and the intent of the item. Um, and so starting off with the airport uh capital funds. Um, so all of the airports projects exist under effective infrastructure network um at the rate of eleven point six million, something change. Um, so uh, we have several projects here coming. I don't know if you want to share on a high level basis the, the projects or um if council has a desire to just talk about um any projects in particular.
I just have a question as to why there wasn't more projections into the future as with the other funds?
Um, we can certainly add those in. We have them from Tony. They're in the fund forecast. Um, so we can certainly add those in for the adopted, or the proposed process.
Yeah, I could provide a short overview if desired. If it's not desired, you can move on.
It's good to know you have it. It would be for historical purposes if we get to see it.
Certainly, the information is.
I just was, you know, I, uh, it's so exciting to see those terminal projects stay in place.
Yeah, absolutely. So as you can see, our anticipation is executing phase one A starting in spring of twenty twenty three. Uh, we're actually working through C R selection as we speak. We get a contractor or board of project or to final design in our schedule for spring of twenty three groundbreaking. Uh, and also, as you can see here, we'll be doing concurrently phase one B design with that selected C R contractor. And it's designed, so the intent is that while we're constructing phase one A, phase one B will be designed concurrently with the same team on the same site, all engaged in the process. And it, obviously in here in the twenty twenty four budget, but you'll see a significant line item in twenty twenty four for phase one B of the project, uh, which is getting incorporated, significant expenditures for the airport as well as some significant federal grants on that. So it's a exciting process for us.
And we'll have an upgraded runway to go with that.
Within forty-five days.
Yeah, I know. It's exciting. Twenty twenty three, you're spending that three point six.
Indeed. So the, the, I was recently trying to counsel to announce our bipartisan infrastructure law, airport terminal program award uh, amount of three point two million. So that will be uh funding portion or three point two out of seven million associated with phase one A project. Uh, we're also like going to use our federal fiscal year twenty-three bipartisan infrastructure law allocated funding of another one point nine million. So take three point two uh and one point nine, and that adds up to about five point one million. And out of that seven million, it's gonna be federal funding for phase one A of the project. So leveraging really heavy funding and all of that is associated with the bipartisan infrastructure law. Uh, we were intending to move through phase one A of this project uh before the onset of a bill, before that was even uh approved in Congress. And ultimately signed, the project at the time has smaller scope. Uh, and that front was intended to be fully locally funded. So this is really an opportunistic opportunity for us to push our funding closer into phase one B, uh, which makes it more and more achievable to bring the fruition of both of those key phases to the length of a five-year period.
So there's a couple of projects in, in other, like twenty fifteen, where the budget number is net of grants. And this one's not, the seven million is not net of grant. So we have a little bit of an inconsistency, even within the two thousand fifteen, there's a couple of projects that are like that too. But some are net of grant and some aren't. And so, yeah, I'm not certain policy wise how we want to do that.
Um, we can certainly add them in there. You know, in the two thousand fifteen, if it is a multi-project, um, you will see um that based on the um county procedures of principles. And Cynthia can help me if I butchered that side of it. But um, because it's an enterprise project, or an enterprise funded project, the grants were moved into the transportation fund. Um, so the revenues and the expenditures for those projects should be listed there. But we'll certainly make sure um any areas where it seems like there's inconsistencies with those grant offsets.
We'll get there. I'm gonna get into some of them. For the entire project, it's five-year, five-year plan?
Uh, should be a little tighter. So we initiated, well, I guess you're correct, yes. We initiated design and all twenty ones are approaching a one-hour mark on the initiation of design.
Okay.
Uh, we'll break ground in one A, spring of twenty three, we're looking at probably nine to twelve months of construction. So likely to wrap either very late twenty three or probably more realistically first quarter of twenty four uh on that front. And if all goes well with funding cycles and grant allocations, uh, we would seemingly break ground shortly thereafter. So called mid-two thousand twenty-four on phase one B of the project. It's much larger or wants uh project, it'll have to be uh multiple phases throughout, it's subphasing, given the fact that we're working around existing operations. Uh, so that's probably eighteen to twenty-four months of construction. So realistically, we're probably looking at twenty twenty-six full commissioning uh of the space. As we move through phase one B, there's a series of dimension subphases. So we're likely to be able to do a hard cut over to the TSA screening checkpoint and open new gate and concession areas first. And then we'll be able to continue to move as we do subphasing for front of house concessions, baggage claim, uh, public restroom shifts, things of that nature. So we'll see kind of a series of commissionings of the space as opposed to just one day driven cutting for uh complete new build.
Okay.
If it was not a rehabilitation project. So we're all in from twenty-one through twenty-six. It's about a five-year development period to the two phases.
I really like how you have the phases and the information presented at the airport for people. That's really, I mean, it's, it's just nice. It's informative and it's right there. And so it's really nice.
Can't miss it.
Can't miss it.
Yeah, we'll definitely do our best to continue to push it in.
Excellent.
Now that we're already in an exciting part of the design, or we're, for phase one A at least, in uh getting into actual design development and construction docs. So I will be getting more and more accurate rendings, and then particularly once we jump into the phase one B design effort potentially next year, uh, which is really gonna be the part that's truly impactful for the community, seeing this big C shift and the functional setup of the terminal. That's where we can really start to put some fun graphics out there and show people that the new year term plan.
So Tony, I have a question for you that also involves Sarah. Uh, with those, breaking down of those silos and those team efforts. And my question is about, in our lifetime, do we think we'll see transit going out to the airport?
In our lifetime?
There's a horizon.
In the tenure of this council.
Yeah.
She's young.
Right.
I thought we were like, we're supposed to be willing to get some of that.
Yeah.
And we are, that is something that Tony and I have had conversations about. Um, and it is something that we consistently hear requested. And so when we look at our transit services expansion, that's definitely one of the areas that we want to get to. So we're actively working towards feasibility of that.
Do we have any idea of the cost for doing something like that?
Two thousand and fifty. Hundred and fifty thousand uh would be kind of a, of on-demand service uh that wouldn't be serving fixed route. I think uh what we would be looking at would be a different service model than what we do with our fixed route service. And it'd be an on-demand uh request.
So I'm just asking because, you know, we're talking about the lodges tax and we're talking things for transportation. And if, if that was, you know, a reasonable amount of money, that would be something that we could make for several years.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think we, I am.
Because I was expecting you to say one point five million.
No. When we get to, uh, when we get to the operating budget, I am um requesting an expansion for on-demand software um that will allow us to pilot anywhere in the county, including the airport. So I'm working on funding partners and things like that.
Excellent. Say, from an airport perspective, it's quite, quite simpler on our side in the sense that the existing infrastructure obviously accommodates a pretty wide array of ground transportation. We permit uh essentially anyone that's gonna provide commercial ground transportation to the airport. Uh, so from our perspective, it would likely just fall within our existing permitting system. It's not something that would be particularly difficult in any aspect for the airport to accommodate.
But you don't see any airport-related grants around transportation?
No, I don't. I'm not familiar with any.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, who else is presenting?
Um, so we can, we're on airport funds. We can move on to the two thousand five open space trails fund capital project. So let's see here that we have five point six million under enhanced ability and sense of place. Um, and this is the list of projects um that are included in the two thousand five open space trails fund. So um, if council would like to go into any deeper detail on any of these particular projects, that'd be great. Uh, this again is for discussions so that we're able um include these projects as a recommended budget. Uh, these projects, Trevor can speak to this better than I, but are, were recommended by the Park Street Advisory Board, so for, for.
And natural lands. Um, so I have a question about the open space acquisition. So it sounded from the detail that the request is to move it out of the eight hundred thousand out of twenty twenty-two and move it into twenty three and then add it to the, about four hundred thousand, so you can come up with one.
Correct. We do have one project uh, please, some progress, depending on how that goes, we may have all be moving forward.
Right, so that's about a five hundred thousand dollar project. Wait, what is this for? You guys are?
Open space acquisition.
Okay, I did have a question too, by the way, on Smart and sixty, but we.
That's okay.
No, both, you both.
I mean, yeah.
Go ahead.
The, the cost of the property right now is about, is four hundred thousand dollars, but we have a few extraneous surveying costs.
So my question is, what is this for? The open space, what location? Well, it's not for the location. It's, it's just in general, we've always been putting four hundred thousand. And he's talking about allocation, but that's, that's fine. So four hundred thousand was kind of what we've always been doing and now we're not spending it and we're pushing it forward. I, I'm wondering if one of the things that we also need to talk about, and this was talked about on several different natural lands boards over the years, is at what point do we be more surgical in our open space acquisition? Like getting connectors to places rather than just buying hundreds of acres of open space land? And there's a lot of reasons why we might want to consider that. And I think that's a policy discussion that council probably needs to have sooner rather than later. Partially because the more land we buy this way, the less land we have for housing and, and other. You said it just makes everything much more expensive. So I'm wondering if that's a policy discussion we should be having.
Yeah, I, I wanna, on the same topic, I'm not sure if we're gonna go through topics, but I have a comment on the same topic.
On two thousand and five or on the?
No.
Open space acquisition?
No, on the open space.
Good, please.
I, I am a bit concerned that we are not adjusting this one for inflation of cost of real estate. And I think that these uh numbers should be significantly higher because if the right opportunity comes along that we as a community and council believes is very important, we're not gonna be able to do, uh, take action based on the fundamentals. So that would be one that I think maybe it's underfunded, given the fact that we have such a high increase in.
Do we also have?
Forecast.
Do we have any potential land acquisition items in the, just that one?
We have one, Jenny, we have a couple that we're talking about.
Do we, any idea about general cost?
I'm not exactly sure what this cost would be, but there's.
So on top of horse gold, okay. And when's the last time we did an open space purchase of land?
Tori, go Mesa.
Last year.
Okay.
Or the year before. At one point, I think they got a purchase of their own property.
And those can, those can come out of here.
And maybe one that I'd like to uh just throw out is that I think there's a, a big missing link. What's that missing link?
Okay.
On the, on the summer, just south of the park, through the C dot property, this side of the highway. And I really think the C dot property, I mean, uh, it had been discussed, but I think it's really an important uh future opportunity to connect everybody from the A R T south where all this growth is taking place, straight into downtown. Maybe it goes nowhere.
So this is a policy conversation that we need to have. So that's exactly why we need to have it.
So I also would like to say, um, first of all, thank you for this in the thinking. I am concerned that um until we have an asset management plan and we know what it's gonna take to maintain all these things that we've done, that insufficient funding is put in for maintenance of these things. I, I look at, so let me just start with, you know, you've got fifty thousand dollars for post-maintenance and that includes fire mitigation, that includes, I think, trail signage and things like that. So I don't think we put into the thinking of how to maintain even what we've acquired.
You bring up a really good point. It does, does, in the past, we had a separate line item for fire mitigation. Is that correct?
Yes, and that, that is in here. That's what we have fifty thousand dollars in addition. For, but I will say, uh, we have three hundred and seventy thousand dollars that may not be reflected in what you see uh for an air transfer.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
I see the.
Four hundred and fifty.
The four hundred and fifty for this year.
But that comes out of the general fund. So the general fund is actually paying, right?
For maintenance.
Yeah, and.
And then what the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board recommended was there's, there is a dollar amount for a transfer.
Okay, so that needs to be populated, but I'm also very much concerned about maintenance of what we have. I mean, those are different transfers to, to cover some of the late night horse and the rec center and things like that. But I am concerned that I see the park trail and rec improvements and that's great. Those, that's an upgrading. This is not maintaining what we have. I also have a question about the pickleball courts, which is um.
Okay, so are we done with this discussion? Can we?
No, it's pickleballs on there.
I know, but are we done with?
Oh, open space.
Open space?
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity.
Does everybody agree that we should have a policy discussion?
I do. I think we should have a policy discussion.
And how we maintain it included.
And I don't know when, because, you know, but these, cause as we go through these budget items, we may be adding.
Or, and also maybe too, again, like, I don't, I don't know, but. Maybe there is, like, what is the policy right now and how does it work?
Well, maybe as a point forward, is this, I think this is good to bring it up and then move it as a future plan. But this is also primarily forecasting, so.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
And as we go through this, I'm just thinking point of order as well. Like, we're, we're gonna probably be bringing a lot of things to the table. We can't just keep adding.
No, I know. That's why we started with this.
Yeah, yeah.
Started with the.
Okay.
So.
Just curious.
But my question on pickleball, I know you're looking at two locations. All right, correct. On the, the Snyder Park is the second one. Will you be doing outreach to, like, there's a, uh, there's a, some condominiums very close to that and some other, there's apartments, I think. Within that area, will there be an outreach to residents? Because the concern has been, oh, we don't want to put it close to, to people because of the noise.
Is, is that point forward? Is that relevant to this topic on agenda?
Well.
Something completely separate how we are going about some.
Well, I think the issue is there, you're trying to get a, you're gonna bring this to us for funding, right? And by the time you bring it to us for funding, you will have narrowed it down to the location. If I understand it correctly.
So Terry, will there be a location determined by the time we bring it in?
So, yeah, we, we're uh, and we're taking those two, we did have a public meeting last week or the week before. Uh we opened it up and invited the whole community to come out of the hand and talk about the two locations. We had a presentation, some of the pros and cons. We didn't specifically reach out to the people up above Schneider Park, but again, the whole community was invited.
Okay.
And we're taking those, those two um sites to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, um sharing with them the information we received in that public meeting and hopefully getting their recognition.
So to your question, Olivia, I didn't want us to go so far down that they brought something to us that was completely booked, that we had not involved in the process as well here.
And as far as the process goes, you said that, that so it will go to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board next and they will discuss it further?
They'll discuss it and hopefully give a recommendation on which site.
I would, I think the one group, uh you are doing some good outreach. I would suggest to the pickleball players, they're very well informed. When I see them, they're like, there's a meeting tonight. And you know, you go, and so that, that, that is job well done. Um and I was curious, you know, on, on just updated, it sound, it looks like according to this uh project description that you're expecting this to be completed by June of twenty twenty three. When would you start?
Well, we're, if we could get clear direction on which site, we can, we have the funds right now this year to, to begin design. Um and then start construction in the next year.
Great. Wow. That's exciting. Okay.
Again, um, yeah, the pickleball community is very well.
Yeah, they really are.
Um we have tried extensively to reach out to our athletes, people who saw us. We sent emails directly to them. They were just not attended at the last meeting. The individual residents, it was a community-wide posting to come out and wish you the best.
Can I go back if you're done with that question?
Yes.
There was the first project um on the Smart one sixty trail. Uh I just found it, the, the write up to that one, just a question for you, Terry. I just found it interesting when we're looking at, you know, three, you know, significant funding, three point two in twenty twenty three. And then uh the previous funding that we've done already and then the one point seven eight five if needed. So is this just based on, you know?
So we're, we're about sixty percent design on the two ends of the, of the project. We're still working with plan one around the middle part.
Right.
So we're still waiting for a good pass estimate. Uh we put in one million dollars for the sheer for construction at that point.
We'll just pull it forward? I was wondering, okay. Okay.
So we'll then have three point.
Two.
Three point.
Three point two plus the one point two?
Four point two.
Yeah. Four point four, yeah. Okay.
And then if needed, um that project may go into twenty twenty four, but we have one point seven.
Terry, could you just clarify on the underpass at Seville Farm? This is included in these numbers I created?
Yeah, that is not included. So we're just using the accurate cost.
Well, it's really exciting to see this project going forward.
I know there's a little bit of connectivity.
Yes.
Confusion, and I think we've been answering those questions.
Good.
It is fun.
This connectivity is gonna be a key piece.
I also have a question on open space issues around there on the equity mapping. Because it seems to, Olivia's point of pointing out a potential sighting. It seems to me we need to make certain we've got parks in some neighborhoods that may be missing. Parks are underserved, so that might be requiring some purchase of property to, for the purpose of creating a park. And I wanted to know when, um when you bring this back, what the planning will be for that of the equity mapping? And I mean, with regard to open space, do we need to use some funding to address any deficiencies that, that come out or that are shown through the equity?
Is our poster master plan, we do have mapping where we have the surface areas or bigger parts, community parts. I might have to go back and verify for open space, but that is something.
And if I can add to, um with the C I P division, they've set up that it's one of the areas where Jennifer and her team have been working to add the projects into the G I S map. And then from there, um we have an inlay on the mapping that shows the census data. Um and so there's a final conversation or piece that we were going to work with CPS H R, those are D E I control. Um to make sure that what we're looking at through the lens of diversity, equity, inclusion, um that we're capturing all of that's appropriate for equity. And there's not other areas. The census data is obviously the best area for us to inlay, but is that for the most usable or the most available information? But is there more that we're missing? So I know Jennifer has been working on that project and so we can circle back to you. And if that is part of the budget process of council desires.
Questions in two thousand and five. Any other questions related to any of the proposed projects?
Uh moving on to the two thousand fifteen Parks and Old Time Model. Um so let's look and see here that uh there is about ten point three million um that exists um within, uh, sorry, that's the total there. So it's five point mil, five million that exists with effective infrastructure network. Four point seven and cancel the billion cents of place and five hundred thousand in diversity, equity and inclusion. Uh this is the list of projects and I apologize for that being so small. As you can see on the bottom down there, those are the two transportation grant projects. Uh and before we take a deep dive into this, I did um want to jump ahead just one slide um to discuss the um Parks and Recreation recommendations as it relates to the out here. So the um multiple advisory board and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board were in alignment on the projects that were in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. Um so for our budget process in twenty three. Um however, in the fund forecast, because we didn't have consistency from the two um boards, we did not include the fifteen until there's consistency. Um however, for this conversation, twenty three, they are in alignment. So those are the two differences in the recommendations from the boards about where the projects exist. And Terry and Sarah, for the least, feel free to add to that.
And that's exactly right. If there's any questions from council.
I, I will say between each, the multi-modal, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, we, we had the opportunity and we felt like there was a need for discussion. We brought the vice chairs and the chairs together to talk about it. Um and we tried to get to a point where we had consensus, but when we got to the end, it, that all there's just didn't line up. So we went ahead and provided the recommendations.
Appreciate that because it's conflicting, or it's on which of both, and the liaison, it was interesting to see.
Right.
And ultimately, you know, it wasn't a contentious disagreement. Uh they just differed in their priorities, uh specifically the construction of the communal project. Um and, you know, we just wanted to bring all of the recommendations to council for your.
So that's why you didn't put it on?
That's why we didn't put it on.
I was wondering, so I had a big question mark by that one.
Absolutely. So since we're in alignment twenty three and twenty four, I will continue forward in twenty twenty five, maybe we all become in alignment and it comes in the budget. But if not, that would then come to a council decision to decide which routes to, to go based on the recommendations.
So the, excuse me, it just seems as though we're hearing from the business improvement district. So I don't know about the rest of you, but I also am getting calls on that. Um but we also have other things to think. So my question is, when do you actually anticipate making a record, either coming back to us? You've, you've gotten in alignment or bringing it to council to make the ultimate, and or bringing it to council to make the ultimate decision?
Right now, I'd probably look at twenty twenty five as we get ready for the budget year for there, uh to see A, how we're doing in construction, see maybe this construction is still going. So looking at that forecast to see, uh if we do have alignment, if we don't, it would be part of that budget process going into twenty twenty five to decide in that rare era realm. Because we can't financially bind future councils, so it'd be a decision for that council to make in twenty twenty five. If everything goes to plan, are you wanting to go ahead and do construction in twenty twenty five as the staff and Parks and Recreation Advisory Board recommend? Or do you want to look at doing it in twenty twenty six and bringing up the midtown in twenty twenty five as the multi-modal advisory board?
I don't see the nineteenth street US five fifty on here at all.
Yeah, I was trying to even figure out what, what that one is.
Cause they were off. They would, they, yeah.
Library.
Right.
It's the library.
By the, the nineteenth street would be um a mid block crossing, a cross US five fifty. And uh at this point, it's just really that thought. There, we haven't gotten even further beyond that. Uh it is a list, uh it was a project that's identified the multi-modal transportation plan, but the multi-modal board pulled um their high priorities.
Okay.
So it was a lower cost, I think. Was that the one?
The design, I think, is three fifty.
So I have a question. I'm so excited to see all the Animus River Trail connections being upgraded. The only one that, I mean, in the next two years, I think that's perfect because that's the, it's the artery. It's the main vein that we use to go up and down. There's one section that's the, from Demon Bridge to twenty ninth street trail. It's not budgeted until twenty twenty seven. And that seems like, why wouldn't we finish the art? Especially before we did like the Rusa connect project.
And I haven't got onto that, but if, if, as it relates to it. Are you, when you budgeted that one point seven, is it to replace that bridge as well? Or could you, if that is included and you're waiting, is it possible to, to at least fix the, the pavement part of the trail? I, cause I.
One point five is for the pavement. It's not for the bridge.
That's not for the bridge at all?
The bridge doesn't, the bridge um was originally requested to have, be changed because Kathy wanted it widened to have, be able to have equipment go across it. But it's not.
Okay, so that's not in the cost.
Right. And so I don't under, I'm really confused about why are we not finishing the art when we have the opportunity?
Which one are you on, Ken?
Um so it says art Demon Bridge to twenty ninth street trail.
Okay.
And, and maybe as a little projection here, um it's probably good to finish that line item here, but is, is there a structure that we can go through this whole list?
Right.
That way we go. No, no, since we started on, let's continue this.
Four different ones here and I, I just wanted to ask the question. We've been talking about other things too. So I'm, so I don't understand. Is there a philosophy there?
Prioritizing, if you look at um, here is it, twenty twenty five, we have uh Chapman Hill ski, the limited, and that, and that has some maintenance issues. So we'll try to balance it out and spread it out. So that's just the way it came.
On late night works, five million.
Right, but I'm not see, I'm, I'm looking at like Rusa. So I just rode Rusa yesterday or did it for yesterday. And it's, it's fine. It's not, I mean, it's, it would be great to be upgraded. We've been working on that for years. But I think that finishing the art, which is our, like our jewel, is much more important than the Rusa connected. And so I'm not, I'm not understanding.
So is your correction, can, are you correct, is your question mostly about this one point five million from the Demon Bridge to twenty ninth street? And why is it in twenty twenty seven? Is that your question? Okay. Just trying to understand.
A little bit of balance also between multi-modal and Parks and Recreation.
Okay.
Well, but the art is multi-modal also. So you, I, 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 what I'm hearing is not a, not a, like a reasoning for that. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Can I suggest that council actually, as we think about these things, we might need to provide direction of how important is maintenance and upgrade to standard versus new projects? Because I think right now it's been kind of, we'll get to the upgrading of, and, and coming to the standards when we have money. But if council actually has that discussion of these are the things we consider important, then that helps you with the prioritization.
Okay, I, I guess, talking about prioritization, maybe can you tell us real quick how the process is for prioritization and the balance between both? So then, cause we could go through and I could say, well, I think the Buckley Park restaurants are more important and should be done this year. And you think this and you think like, we all have, like, I ride the art all the time and that section of the art doesn't bother me. Like, it's not like the worst section of the art I've ever been on. Does that make sense? And so I might, you know, I might feel differently. So what processes have you gone through?
Our prioritization process, Sarah jumped in there, and then our assignment takes us to both boards. Um we sent out a list of projects. I think in Parks and Recreation, we must have forty projects and that is. And we asked um the board members to prioritize one through fifteen, um what they see as important. Staff then takes it back. We kind of calculated it out, maybe cumulatively rerank everything so we get a one through fifteen. Then we send it back out again, that one through fifteen, and then they kind of re-rank it again. But that's just in Parks and Recreation. Uh and then multi-modal.
Exact concurrent process with multi-modal as well. Uh and, you know, a lot of our projects originate in multi-modal transportation plan and then from uh during public input and comment on our readings and requests. Um so we also came up with a top eleven individually ranked and then went back and weighted those um for the full boarding, which they adopted as a recommendation. And Rusa was uh their second highest priority for the multi-modal.
Has been for a while.
That's why probably it's up there. And we also have grant funding awarded for it.
We do, right.
Ready to be spent.
Okay.
And a twenty twenty eight, yeah. So it has a couple of years and you could work on this.
These are just, and also these are recommendations. Well, the council is that you want to push one up and another one, that, that is your call. So these are recommendations, so they are at the council's pleasure to be modeled.
So can I suggest for a process, could you, we started with, with Kim, Councilor Baxter? And let's just go around. If you've got one project for us to start with that you want to discuss here, can you put it out?
Can you finish that? Because I want to respond specifically to Rusa and the other one. And then hopefully we can finish with that.
Okay, cause I was gonna bring, I'm gonna bring up Rusa as well, but I didn't want to jump over to that.
Yeah, so I, maybe you should go first.
You go ahead first. I'm, I, I'm just. Go first.
I, I actually completely agree with Council Baxter. I think that uh a river trail section is in extremely poor state and it's probably going to get a lot worse with all the cracks and the bumps you have in there with winters, if you have five more winters, four more winters. So to me, uh I think the boards make great recommendations. They have their preferences, obviously, and they come to good recommendations, but in the end, it's we that decide how we prioritize the final product because they're a conflicting uh topics. So on the river trail, I agree. And then the Rusa topic, um two point two five million, I think it's a very important project. But I have concerns about uncertainties and the changes that need to take place over time, making this temporary project that might require significant changes over time. And that would be. that might require significant changes over time. And that would be the potential for pickleball court in that same area, the potential for, if there is a long-term plan, to do something with communal wheel that would go on the other side of the river, if that ever would be an option, it would potentially impact that area as well. And then the, the, the concern with Rusa is safety. And the project became a larger redesign, that's correct, that's a larger redesign from the bridge all the way to the street. So maybe, yeah, maybe as a measure, to address the most important part, being safe crossings, there is a way to split this up in something that we can do to address safety. And then as a longer term solution, do a proper design for the whole area, however that master plan will end up looking, that, and the pickleball courts, and the highway, the bypass potentially. And then do it the right way only once, instead of doing something now that might be ripped out later. There is one thing that I can mention is the grant money involved. And maybe we can use at least a big chunk, I mean, I don't like to spend money, even though it's partially grant money, if you know it's going to be changed over time. But maybe by doing a temporary measure, it would be a solution to still tap into a portion, a large portion of that grant money, to satisfy the safety issue, address the safety issue, and buy ourselves time to figure out what the vision is in that area.
So.
I was just gonna say, I, I mean, the same, when I was looking at this, I actually thought that Rusa should be done in here because of the pickleball courts potentially. If the pickleball courts went there, I think that it's like necessary that we fix that in between that traffic, plus skate park traffic, plus cemetery traffic, plus like, it is a very busy area. And so that was one, I was like, well, I actually think that that should be done if the pickleball courts go there, and not for shop.
So my issue on Rusa is, Councilor Baxter and I both attended, and Sarah, you were there, that community engagement, it was back in twenty nineteen, and huge questions about safety were raised with that current, with the design that was at ninety percent, I believe.
Right.
Completion. And there was not an overwhelming cry of do this. So my question is, are you going completely back to a new design?
No. We, what, what our recommendation is, as staff, is design your vision based on the feedback that we did get. The way that the current ninety-five percent design describes the project is a ten-foot shared use path on the east side of Rusa, which the comments we got was actually abundant, running parallels to the Animus River Trail right there. And also eliminated the bike lanes, so that it-
Guardrails.
Traffic with the pedestrian traffic on the shared use path. So staff's recommendation is to return to a standard five-foot sidewalk, maintain the bike lanes in either direction. The design will improve the intersection at Ninth Street, Avenue of El Sol, and El Paso, and it's safer. And-
Will guardrails be maintained, so when that's going to land in the park?
Skate park, yeah.
And then also, just for the new counselors as well that are writing up for this, will there be some kind of smoothing of some of those steep roads that are coming down?
We can look into, yeah, some of the, where some of the intersections align, there were some concerns about being able to stop on ice at a steep rate, so we'll be looking at that as well.
Okay.
Maybe making more of like a turn yield, especially at El Paso, that really steep turn coming down onto Rusa. But yeah, there were a number of critical concerns that were brought up through the ninety-five percent design process, that you're including a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this request for design revision on top of the construction grant that we used.
And what's the timing of that design revision?
Depending on the budget approval, we could get that started in January, and then we would anticipate, since they're not, it's not a complete overhaul in design, then we anticipate that we'd be able to go to add the construction.
And how much was the grant for this one?
We have nine hundred and ninety thousand.
So on that, may I just ask one more thing? I, I met with, I met with the parents whose child was hit at the corner of the light there. But we looked at traffic patterns, we were there on a Monday morning at eight o'clock, looking at speeding on Rusa into West Park, coming down Rusa, because, because of the work on Camino, people were using that and had huge trucks going through. So my question is, as you're doing this redesign, will you be able to also look at the intersection with Park? And there's no, there's no white painted lines for getting to the, the city park right there. I mean, kids are not crossing at any kind of intersection. So I'm looking at, do you have the potential to look at what is a very confusing intersection as part of that redesign?
Yes, the potential is there. And the scope of the grant is from Ninth to El Paso, but, you know, we do have the flexibility to be able to connect it. And we have a pilot program, quick build design that's going in this summer for West Park, and this will help address some of that increased traffic and increased speed that we're seeing along Rusa and West Park. And that's one of the, El Paso and Rusa is one of our quickest growing bicycle and pedestrian areas when we do our counts by annually, and you see that one increasing every single year.
And kids using that park and not having a safe, I mean, I watched kids go in there, and there is no, there was no crosswalk for them to get to that park.
It would have to be a different project, though.
It would have to be a different, but as you're thinking about safety along that whole line.
So I want to go back just briefly to the Animus River Trail.
And then I'd like to speak to that project.
Okay.
And just suggest that if we are doing all of these projects at the same time, it has to be less expensive than having people come out three years later and do the same kind of project. So by putting them all together, I think we could be more efficient and effective with our money also.
My suggestion was to, I, I am, I'm supportive of going with staff recommendations to address Rusa safety project, just because, I don't know, I've been hearing about it for years now, and I'd like to continue on with the prioritization of this project. I do think it's a critically heavily used area, a lot of traffic, so I'd like to see that safety be addressed in that area. But I think that potentially, we could take that one point five million in the twenty-twenty-seven budget for the Demon Bridge to Twenty-Ninth Street and put it in twenty-twenty-four, and prioritize that for next year. And then we, we focus on the Rita Park, you know, Santa Rita Park to Albertson's Trail and the, in the, for the Animus River Trail this year, or in twenty-twenty-three, and then the following year, adjust the Demon Bridge to the Twenty-Ninth Street, because they only have two million so far for twenty-twenty-four. So I think we can, let's pull it up. I don't know why they have it pushed out so far.
You're saving money for Lake Night Course.
Looking at the fund balance, I think that is something that we can definitely consider. We are at one point five nine one million dollars in fund balance in twenty-four, that project. It is something that we potentially would want.
It seems, it just seems very far out to me.
Yeah.
And it is really important, it's only going to get worse in the next five years. So, I mean, I would, I'd be supportive of basically almost even letting the Parks and Rec Board and multi-modal know that for, you know, for this council, it's a priority, and we'd like to see it in twenty-twenty-four.
Well, and speaking of hearing about something for years, hearing about for years.
So, yeah, and we, I, you know, my other thought on the Animus River Trail is, I actually do think we've done some really good improvements along the way. I think we did last year, and I think we're continuing to. So I appreciate that approach of each year addressing certain sections most heavily used. So that's just my thought on that. And I think we're doing a good job. I know we can't fix it all today. And so I like the fashion in which we are stepwizing in.
I would like to also weigh in on the Animus River Trail, which is, I believe it needs to be fixed. I mean, that's just, you maintain what you have and you bring it up to the standard. So I would support definitely moving the twenty-twenty-seven into a, if a minimum of twenty-twenty-four. I also, on the Rusa, I do see a benefit of addressing that. And I do see some issues around there. I do, I'm concerned with the, the only concern is, is getting that design right, so that the community supports it. And then also the staging, if should pickleball go there, it's going to look very different than this design you might start in a week or two, if you've got the approved, you know, funding. So that's my concern, is you're going to have a very conception around parking or access.
And I, my response to that would be that the timing is actually really conducive, because we would not be able to allocate funds for Rusa revision until January. And it sounds like they would be able to move on the, mentally. So we'd be able to incorporate those two projects.
That's great.
I wanted to ask a question about Durango Mesa Park. So you had the, are we done with that one then?
Are we, have we covered the Animus River Trail and Rusa?
So, you want to just start from the top?
I thought we would just go around and allow each person to throw out one.
I don't, she's, she's-
All right.
I mean, you want to talk about that too, right? Or you-
Which one do you want to talk about? Durango Mesa Park. I just wanted to mention that, there's-
The only problem with doing it this way is I've got stuff that were updated to Durango Mesa Park.
In the development, it says in the development of a contract with the DMP Foundation to design and fund the construction of the bike park. We haven't seen that at all.
No, we're still working on that.
And several key trail connections to the Horse Gulch open space were also completed by Durango Mesa Park. I don't know what trail connection says on it.
So we've been talking about doing several demonstration trails that tie Durango Mesa Park to Horse Gulch. I just had a conversation with them this morning, you know, that we're going to try and get that design, do the flagging and all that environmental done this fall, but we'll probably end up doing the construction stuff of those demonstration trails.
That's interesting, because it says they were completed.
They were all now completed.
Ah, okay. I just, I think if you're going to be spending four and a half million dollars, you need to have some idea of why and what we're doing more specifically than a couple of trail connections.
Well, was, was one and a half for the infrastructure?
There is, part of it is for some infrastructure, and to do some design work, and we're still looking at that. They hired HDR to come in and start working on some of that infrastructure. We're looking at how we get those costs from the city paid over to them, so we're still working on that.
Well, we've already paid them one point five million for, for infrastructure.
That one point five million from what I understand is supposed to be used for the Highway Three intersection.
And the road, and the sewer and water aspects, designing.
It's really just-
It's just the road.
It's just the, yeah, the turnout, I think. So this is why we should know, we should know what there is here for, not much money. Well, we've got two million budget in twenty-twenty-four, but yeah, over time, that's what we're talking about.
The large chunk of that, four point seven million dollars is for the bike park.
Are we paying the full cost for the bike park?
No.
But we need more information.
Bike park and infrastructure, because the one point five is going to infrastructure.
For the Highway Three.
Yeah.
But that's not in the four point three.
That's not part of it.
And, and Tori, also on that, because of the IAP meeting, we had a, we just got started, but they intend to bring it back. It was mentioned that we would probably be looking at water and sewer going out there. And one of the comments was, well, should ratepayers again be paid for something like that out of a water fund, or should that come from the twenty-fifteen sales tax? So a real question as we talk about these larger issues. So if you're looking at water and sewer, is that included in your budget by now?
That is not included in this budget. It's given for the bike park, and we get some modest infrastructure, and we're looking at potentially using water wells temporarily. Where HDRs just starting to come back to us with some, we cost, we're starting to hone in on those together. So, but the, this project, we've got include both water and sewer.
And this five million, or what is it for?
Four point three.
Four point three million over three years. Is it possible to, to spread that out over four years, thus being able to move up the Animus River Trail? Because part of the, the issue, the Demon Bridge up, is, you know, we build the big, it's shiny, but are we not taking care of what we have? So.
I mean, I think looking at the fund balance, what I, what, what's the advisory board recommended to you, when you look at that fund balance, if we can, with the twenty, the project, twenty-seven, twenty-
That'd be great.
But that leaves us with a very slim, tight fund balance. So maybe we could do some of that thing with those dollars.
And is there an option for Durango Mesa to be paid out over four years instead of three?
There's a possibility.
Well, with the slowest things are going, you might not be spending one point two million dollars in twenty-twenty-two anyway, and one million dollars in twenty-twenty-three anyway. So it could be getting pushed out anyway.
It could be, and we'd be reappropriating it.
Yeah. You'd be bringing it to council for reappropriation.
I know that there's a desire to have the bike park in some of these projects completed by the ball to the board, and to try and bring in some of those.
No, I would reiterate that. I mean, I think that this, the reality is with Durango Mesa Park, I don't want to underestimate, this is a huge project for our community. It's an eight-hundred acre park, and we're starting with the bike park, but obviously, it's going to take millions for infrastructure to get up there. But ultimately, over time, it's going to be a massive, massive asset for us. So I don't want to underestimate that, but it's just a function of when the money is needed. And I think that we're demonstrating our commitment to the project, and the county is as well. And so I guess that's just that question, if it works.
And I think we need to see the contract for the development and designing the bike park.
And I think that the, the discussion of what's the appropriate entity to pay for water and sewer up there may need to come to council as well.
We're having those discussions with the foundation and the property.
You go. Go ahead, you go. It's your turn.
Well, we can pick, I, let's do Camino Crossing.
Camino Crossing.
Yeah, that's a good one.
I, I think Camino Crossing is a concerning project, because the ongoing studies and the number of uncertainties, and the potential for changes, and that, and that maybe being money well spent. So it includes approval from property owners, that to me, I understand, is not a hundred percent resolved. The discussion of the fire station, the future on Riverside to Camino to downtown, and if we have a vision to do something with Camino on the west side of the river. All of those could impact the underpass and make changes to the design, remember, or make it even redundant. And I know we are getting support for that project. And there's also a large number of people that don't support it, for the expected cost, many millions, no termins, et cetera, and concerns with safety. And I, I've seen beautiful pictures of new underpasses, and I appreciate that. But I think if you have traveled a little bit, and you've seen ten, twenty-year-old underpasses, those pictures might change a little bit, graffiti, sleeping, sheltering smells. And I do, I, I, I fully support safe crossing in that area. And I'm just concerned about spending money for design, and it's scattered in twenty, twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six, so we're four years out. And so basically, I'm not very supportive of even spending money on the study until we know for sure that this is moving forward. And to do a study in design engineering, to make sure it meets what our future intention is with that area, with the city, et cetera. And to address the safety, and maybe we could further explore stop sign, which I think was already discussed with CDO, but maybe if we finance the stop, stop sign. Yeah. If it's not possible, maybe another solution would be to reevaluate the design of the traffic light where Camino meets Fourteenth, which is on the north side of the Discovery Museum, which is obviously, one of the connections was the Discovery Museum. And so I'm just concerned that we're spending, and this, there's a lot of projects like this, we're spending money on studies in design engineering, even though the project is many years out, and potentially will never happen, in which case we would have spent money and the study documentation goes on the shelf. And this is an example where there isn't a need for a safe crossing.
There isn't?
There is. So I'm supportive of doing something about it. But I'm not sure if, because we don't even know if the underpass is possible.
Can, can we open it up? And let me just, to make certain you're clear, if it were only about paying for a traffic light, I think we would have had it. We know they're seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we could have bought it. But that's not an option. So I think it's important to say, we have explored possibilities multiple times of getting a crossing at that, in that area. I do want to say also that I think it's important, Councilor Bosman, so you talk about changing Camino, and possibly having that involve Ruso. And that's your vision, or possibly, or your imagination, or whatnot. But it is not something that this council has explored. And so what I'm trying to make certain we do is we stay with what we've been building, and, and being open to new ideas and things like that. But, but right now, waiting until somebody actually might think about changing Camino completely, and having it look different, is not something I'm willing to do either. We have Camino, I'm trying to work with what we know we have. So I wanted to make certain thing in our- So I wanted to make certain thing and I'll open it up to a response to Olivia's.
Just one clarification. I I gave the option also for the existing stop sign, stoplight at 14th and Camino. Not sure how to call it.
Spider junction 15th.
Yeah.
Yes, Spider Junction.
14th, 15th.
I'm not saying that my vision is a certain way. I, for me, it's important that when we do projects now, that they meet a certain vision from our community. And since we have no vision in that respect, except for your vision, which is saying we stick with what we have.
No, the vision that we've heard from this community for close to 13 years is a safe crossing of Camino.
The vision there, I'm talking about how a bigger picture vision, whatever Camino is. It's not my decision. It's not. It's something that the community should desire, but we don't have.
Let me open it up to council.
Camino as it is, then you have decided that that is our vision, because we are addressing a specific project.
Let me, let me open up to council.
CDO controls Camino with input from us. CDO didn't spend the however many dollars they just spent on that entire section of Camino to turn around and put it on Russo and put a four lane highway through a neighborhood. That I I don't know what what vision that will ever exist in. So I personally don't even want to think about going down that path because I don't think it's a possibility. I want to work with possibilities.
Other responses on the importance of Camino?
I don't know much.
I just, I'm looking at, you know, just even your project details and seeing our first step done in the spring of 2022. So now it's been over two years. Design process kicked off in August of 2021 and is expected to complete in August 2023. First of all, I wasn't sure, why, why is that? Why are we expecting that design process to even take two years? Is it just because of the delay? I mean, why does the design process need to take that long?
We had pretty significant COVID delays. We got this, the design of this project.
That makes absolute sense, but now, here we are now, couldn't we, so we think we'll do it in a year, basically.
Yes, and it is, you know, it is a very complicated project. We are at 30% conceptual. We are having conversations with the FPD, with Town Plaza, about that whole site plan in the area. So conversations will take a little while. And we will have to get under the roadways, see what types of utilities we're working with and be impacted. So the design process will take some time as it should, because it's a.
It's a big deal.
Project.
Right.
And so we wanted to make sure that we're not rushing it and that we are doing ourselves that.
So just to expand upon what you're saying, which makes total sense, but you're in the middle of having conversations with the DFPD and Town Plaza. You know, lots could happen there, right? And and so, so does that affect, you know, to Counselor Bosman's point, does that affect this? You know, should should we be consider, should we wait and see what's happening there and figure, you know, should the, let's just take it a step further and just say, what if, you know, DFPD did end up at River City Hall and maybe even, you know, some, some, some city, DPD as well? And so say that they were designing the that. Would would we want that to include access and consistency to this that we're talking about designing now ahead of that?
And I think, I mean, I think this is another case where timing can really work to our advantage. We get to have the have the conversations right now where things are fluid and flexible for all the projects. We haven't gotten so far in our conceptual designs with Camino that it would be a large undertaking to pivot to to incorporate whatever the site plan looks like for potential DFPD.
But what if we did get over the next year before then? How do you address that?
Well, at this point, you know, we're not going to generalize in the process. Like it's a concurrent collaborative effort, so yeah, we're we're working.
So you're gonna do it simultaneously with any of those designs? So this would not go ahead?
No.
I didn't understand that. You're saying yes. I didn't get that. I want to know.
Literally, I was gonna say in response was like, this is the perfect time in construction to actually do this design because we potentially are going to be in design with DFPD or whatever is happening there. And that's how you can make the intersection work the best. If you let DFPD move in and the PD move in and everything's done there, and then you try to go back and redo it.
I'm not suggesting that at all.
I'm just saying that would be mad, and I'm just saying if we don't do the design.
But what I'm wanting, but what I'm wanting to confirm publicly and in open is that we are basically, we're in discussions now, and this is in the budget for next year, but we aren't moving ahead of them.
Absolutely.
We're moving in conjunction with them, simultaneously with them, and if it moves such that they aren't moving there, you know, we haven't, that those decisions aren't done.
Simultaneously working with 9R Building or, right?
Or ourselves, yeah, at that point. I don't know. So I just want to make sure I understand that.
But my. Junction Street traffic calming.
And also, to your point, like where our staff isn't working in a silo, we are working with other partners and they do see what's going on in our community and we pivot and we move in a fluid motion. So I fully support spending money on design. It's not studies. It's actual design, and it's not gonna sit on a shelf. We're gonna use it because we're working with other people. And I'm super excited for a safe crossing there. You talk about like being the artery of our community that are like, I can't tell you how many times my voice and I cross at that traffic hawk signal or whatever there and how amazing it would be to have.
And if I can finish my.
And I would also like to share my points so that we.
Yeah, yeah, yes. But I just wanted to ask questions for clarity, and I didn't get to share my points. But it was really important for me to clarify that connectivity and that joint effort together. And with that, I, this, yeah, I mean, we've all been hearing about it and we know especially who's supportive of this. But I think that this is a really important crossing and it would be so great also for our businesses and connectivity and bringing our whole community together, and I support moving forward on this crossing as well.
And I wholly support it with the timing, and I would love to see the construction moving up because, you know, we got to hear when we were the whole issue of the the overpass on 32nd Street. We got to hear that that was the busiest street. Durango is the busiest Durango maintained street. We all know that Camino is hugely unsafe for kids to get down there. And I also agree that there's a way now to to influence as well the thinking and hear from others on the thinking. So I wholly support it. I think.
I I support.
I think we have.
As well as the count of Camino Crossing, taking into account, you know, one of the things that we all got an email on too is that Corolla with the Fire Department is concerned about people crossing the road and an emergency vehicle coming out. Now, there are a lot of areas where where those kind of things happen and their safety take concerns taken care of. So I'm sure you'll figure all of that out. I, for years, this has been talked about. I think it's a great way to bring people into the upper end, if you will, of that portion of Main, so that we can start getting more activity up there commercially and just make it a better place. And then when we do the Spider Junction and we can connect Spider so easily up in the North Main, it's gonna be awesome.
There's one other partner that I feel I do miss. I didn't, I did mention, but the train's been really involved in this process as well. It's gonna be pretty impactful within there right away too. So they've indicated there's a project.
Excellent.
Thanks, girl.
I might even have a train stopped up.
I've tried to keep us focusing on the big projects that are coming up. There's some others up there. Does anyone have something that they want to raise? And otherwise I'll throw out one as well. I just wanted to see if you wanted to talk a little bit about the midtown issue and the and the downtown issue. Sufficient funding, that's just studies, and then it would require additional funding. Would that come from street tax? Would, you know, what are you thinking on those?
So you're talking about the midtown.
Midtown is the Spider Junction.
Is the Spider Junction?
Um, yes.
And then downtown.
Okay, so we have, there were some delays in designing for the town safety and connectivity project based on the traffic study. It is a pretty complicated traffic study that involves CDO's right away as well. So CDO actually funded the traffic study portion of it and we're just finalizing that now. They've looked at, you know, the impacts to 550 potential one-way situations, and then also we're looking at Florida, Third, and 15th. I mean, those all come together there.
But are you looking? Are you also including 12th Street in that study or not? And could it be in the sense of the concern about the parking and the the traffic?
Yeah, that is included in part of the traffic flow that we're looking at. So we, our staff reviewed a draft of the traffic study about a month ago. And they were gonna be incorporating our revisions and comments, and we'll have a finalized traffic study to move forward into the 60% design phase. So we're currently at a pretty conceptual level for them now. But this project is addressing bicycle and pedestrian connectivity from River Town from Florida into Central Mount.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
It is, yeah. Other questions on either the Spider Junction or the downtown?
On the, let's split them up. On the midtown safety, I, I think it's also a very important project. I, you probably remember when I, when I just joined as a liaison, I asked if this was something that was going to present it as a very high level of options for the multimodal boards to get some inputs so that when when it goes to design that you have it somehow narrowed down. And I think that would be great to have that sooner than later to make sure that the efforts go in the right direction. And because I always keep thinking it would be so easy to run a trail along the railroad line, road to the intersection, Spider intersection. And, you know, all these, you mentioned a couple of options, but I I think that's one of the missing links that would be very important for our community and connecting the arts to downtown.
Any other that are listed here that you have questions about concerns about?
Again, you guys, this is the process and everything has been fabulous. I mean, you're coming to us before budget, so we're all informed. We can get feedback. We can talk about it and we can discuss it more budget. If necessary, but I think this process has been really, really good, and and last year it was good. I think this year it's better. So I applaud you all for that.
I may follow up on you. You also mentioned midtown next step, downtown next steps. Is, if nobody else has comments on that, then I will share my comments and thoughts.
I feel that we got a great update, and I know we have more coming up, and I've heard great things about everything from people, and I'm excited for.
But that money is just for studies. It is not for the implementation.
Correct. Yes, we have 400,000 currently budgeted for the design of downtown next steps, and the RFP is off the design right now. Those is August 31st.
So maybe have a better idea what it's gonna cost. It's a little hard to budget for the actual construction.
So I, I'm a little bit concerned about how we are going about this because, first of all, it's a huge project. And it will seriously impact our community during construction as well as on completion. So like, for example, the designs that went through the whole process, and I think some of them or all of them did not even get confirmed to be complying with delivery truck turn radiuses or with fire trucks. So we we go through that whole process and we get a community involved and we're looking at designs and then we almost, I I believe that the chance is pretty high that they will not meet the turn radiuses. So the whole design would be like, okay.
Point of, point of information.
Yeah, were you here at the meeting?
Yeah, do you know that?
I mean, do we have information to to show that?
At the last meeting, it was all confirmed. Everything worked. They were keeping the middle turn lane. Were you at that, the last council meeting? Where it was presented?
Yeah.
It was all confirmed.
So you were saying that these designs, when when the meeting, when the lady presented from that, they said, no, it's not for sure. We have to go through the proper design. And I said, does that look like it's because they did not apply the standards to have a turn radius?
But. I'm gonna go back to.
But anyway, let me, let me just for efficiency, let me move on.
For efficiency, let's say that there is your opinion about the radius is an opinion. It is not a fact. It's not been verified that there is an issue.
And and even if it will come back to us during design, if it has to change because of turn radius. So I think if 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 it's not confirmed, then it's okay.
If I may, I think you're referring to the public process that identified conceptual designs that the community heard different alignments. So what's out for for at right now is seeking engineering designs that will determine turning radiuses and all of that.
Okay.
And there will be a public process associated with that portion as well.
Appreciate that. So we'll see how they match up with the initial results.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm gonna run through. I'll try and be a bit faster.
Okay.
So I, we all get a lot of comments on the way it looks now. Outdoor ceiling is great. It's also like a little bit of free market, what is what I hear. And we have positive surveys, but I also have very negative feedback from business owners. And I am very happy that some businesses benefit with the outdoor ceiling. And but where I'm going to is, it might be beneficial to go through a high level presentation of how this will play out in practical terms. As in, if the economic impact to our businesses to do such major construction during Good Windows, which is when they do business outside, and it would practically close downtown for several months for each block. How do we address parking to offset the impacts during construction as well as the lost parking spaces upon completion? Should that be parked before the construction take place? So I just wanted to throw out some options and solutions to address those issues. First would be to have a fair fee structure for any business that wishes to use outdoor city owned property, which now I believe is 104 million dollars a year. And that money could be used to improve our downtown and benefit all businesses. And this is the second year, so next year, next year, so to me, that would be, that would be an important part with the deadline before the, maybe February next year.
May I make a recommendation?
I have two pretty much.
I'm serious.
We're all looking.
Because we're all like going, okay, why don't you put these in writing and make recommendations to staff about them and to council about them? Because we're not even anywhere near that conversation yet.
Is this a level of detail that?
Yeah.
Well.
Melissa, you were gonna say something. I saw you getting ready to say.
Oh, I was gonna, I, it's kind of unrelated.
Okay, sorry.
Well, it's it's related to this topic, but.
So my, my concern, Counselor Bosman, is that you put thought into it, and I appreciate that. I I think, you know, I think the discussion is to have it be in the in the right forum. And today, telling them what to do, I mean, we're just trying to get a sense, you could have input into the you still, the design is still up, right? So through either the multimodal or something, you could have some suggestions. Is that correct?
Let me, let me try and change my, I have more points, but let me bring it back to the budget, to the forecast. So we have here, what is the amount? 600, no, yeah, 600 in total.
Four plus three.
Oh, sorry.
This is downtown.
Downtown.
Yes, so 300 this year, 400 last year.
It was 400 total, 100 this year and Karen.
Oh, okay, so it's only 400 total. Okay.
That changes a bit.
Yep, so we're, we're spending 400, of which 100 is already spent on the design for intention to do something after 2027, because there's no number associated with construction. And we haven't addressed some of the key issues in my opinion that should take place beforehand.
But they're not key issues that we are like, council, it's our staff, and they have. When I sat down and listened to them presenting, it was that a lot of those were addressed, a lot of those issues. Did you go to any of the planning meetings?
Is there a fee structure?
We talked about a fee structure and like where they would be, but is that our?
That's kind of policy related. It's not designed.
And this is design, and we decided we were going forward with that.
For something that might may take place after 2027. Is it worthwhile to go through that design now?
Yes.
When we have not, it's four more years before.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that it won't end up in 2026. If you look at it, it's 1.8 million dollars in 2026. It doesn't mean it won't end up in 2026. It means we have to know an approximate value of what it's going to cost, so we know how to budget for it. And that's what they're working on for the design process. What you raise are great questions, and I'm sure that they'll get addressed. And I believe that if you send those questions to all of us and to the staff, that they will address those and include those in their considerations. But that's how we, you know, I looked at this. There's several on here that only have design, and some of them aren't because of a disagreement between boards, weren't listed specifically. But also some of them need some dollars attached to them to know what to do with them.
The one thing, the one question I did have that I kind of, does kind of piggyback to what you're suggesting is that, you know, we did that survey. And in that survey, we had a lot of responses. And in that survey, we had a lot of responses. And in those responses, I was kind of curious. I don't mean to catch you off guard, but like if you could kind of vaguely remember. Wasn't there an extremely high portion that liked the bump outs in that survey? I recall that. I don't remember exactly what number it was, but a lot of people from that survey suggested there was, it seemed like, I want to even suggest it was. Pretty overwhelming amount of people that and businesses that supported bump outs. And then also there was a a lot, a very, very significant number of people from that survey that supported. Moving forward with this whole project that believed in what we're doing and and ultimately getting to a new downtown. Is that, am I correct in that?
I believe so.
Well, and it wasn't bump out specific. I don't think the support, I think it was for that outdoor area.
Yeah, in this one, but we did another survey that was was bump outs.
Yeah, that was.
Really liked it. Um, so anyway, the the feedback I've been seeing in this, I just wanted to reiterate that is seem to be supportive.
Yeah, so can I, can I?
No, no good comment.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
We came to the council in twenty twenty in a short order to get buy in on this. Obviously, we weren't the only ones in this public community across the state nation here. Over, I feel like we need to come back now this three years and talk about policy with whether the council will be supporting. Think the survey has been supportive of these things, but I think we haven't really come back and had a special session to really talk about bump ups, fee structures. I think we have to get back to things that the council might be interested in knowing about, because we do have three years running on this now. Want a conversation about what.
Let's be second.
And certainly the input from the bids as well.
When we, when we looked at the conceptual designs, the bump outs are not bump outs anymore and we all really felt that that was a better. Way of doing it and having a bump per se bump out.
So may I call, may I call this topic to a consensus question? I want to make certain Sarah has the sense of. Support or or not from council with going forward with this particular, these two particular items.
Yes, for me.
Yes.
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 And I'm glad it's three hundred thousand dollars less than we thought.
I was I was going to say that that would be really helpful from a public perception point of view if there's a way to clarify that. You know, we budgeted four hundred. I don't want to make it more complicated, but people are going to look at that and go seven hundred thousand as we did.
And what we'll show in the proposed budget is we'll show what's been spent twenty twenty one, what's the amended budget is. Should be able to reflect that. So and I did want to note too that some of the multimodal projects for the out years. Were not included back to the conversation around the inconsistencies there, but when we propose this for council, we'll have a five person C I P.
Matt's recommendation had the downtown next step construction.
That's right.
So just to clarify, I am supportive of this project. It is the process we are taking to get there. And how we make sure that businesses, all businesses. Try benefit and also don't go under during the execution.
I appreciate that.
I'm sure it'll be brought to.
I think raise it, put it in writing for us to see and it's. Available for you to think about and address some of those questions. Don't necessarily think it's for us to set those. Determination and things, but it's for us to be aware. Um, Jose.
I did one thing more before. You know, one of the things I do notice just generally on this, like for example, in the two, in the multimodal or really in all of them. There are a lot of design projects going on at once and I think at some point, you know, clearly you guys are going to be very, very busy. It's and at some point it will start and or as a city, we're going to be very, very busy. And so I am noticing that. I mean, this is definitely not just one or two. I mean, there's a whole lot of design projects for a lot. And maybe that's just because we're up and running, we're gearing, we've got staff, we've got the bandwidth to do it, but I'm recognizing. From someone who's not doing the work that I I hope that we can handle that bandwidth.
Yeah, and Melissa, I would say we lost two years with, we had some of those slated for twenty twenty and some slated for twenty twenty one. And so now we are. But as you think about it, when you're looking at what you're designing, there's also the possibility of. You're not having individual designs that are talking to each other. What does this look like? What does spider junction look like? What does the underpass look like?
But I wanted to kind of hear from staff, you know, their thoughts on that if you can, just because that's me, something I know. So I kind of wanted to hear. About, you know, bandwidth and and coordination of projects like Barbara's suggesting or whatever.
No, Allison, don't try to speak with her or her, if there's anything you want to add for her, nothing discussed, but.
She's going.
I think we're we're maybe we're we're all right now. We're, we've still got one project manager that will be to hire for transportation, but we've got it. C I P inspectors too on board. I think we're in a much better position. A lot of the design has been a lot of course this year. And we see we're still releasing three major designs throughout the various departments for next year. So bandwidth, I think we've got it. We'll see with the funding what council supports, but I mean, I don't see anything yet that we can't. Which is a reasonable.
As long as people respond to the bids.
That is, and part of, part of this is our attempt to get as many projects out the door bid on January first. Instead of this year, it was sort of more like March, April, because we were setting up C I P and. Catching up on designs and things like that. So. That way contractors won't be booked up for the entire season by the time our bids go out. So we're trying to take these items into a jam.
Yes.
I would just like to add that. Allison through has been doing a fabulous job with that to recreation and some projects. Having her and her staff, I think are getting to a point on the design side that is still a little bit. Difficult right now. We're using some contractors to get to a meeting.
And I would concur that in multimodal, there's a significant amount of public outreach and everything associated with these projects outside of the C I P process. So yes, that can mix up with easy, but it is.
I guess you're working hard.
So I I just wanted to turn to Jose for a moment. We're going to get in two weeks, we're going to get I A V's projects, so that'd be streets, water. Sewer. What else are we getting coming forward? The capital.
Streets, trash recyclable and C I P too.
So what I'd like to suggest is it's really could be helpful to be efficient is to look things over. To the extent that you can put your questions in advance and staff appreciate that so they can answer it. But Jose, is there anything you wanted us to be thinking about through this process as it relates? So you'll be coming back to us with the budget on October eighteenth. No, we're going to do.
Move to the seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
While I was gone for a few days.
That's right.
This process and as we think about between now and in the seventeenth, what will be coming to us?
Sure. You know, I think that we're doing a good job of getting out here and kind of showing it to you all before. I appreciate Council Baxter. And you pointing that out that it's getting, it's getting better. We're all getting familiar with the process. So. As I look at this, you know, our goal is really is we hit that budget, create that there won't be anything like, where did this come from? We've discussed our C I P projects. We have a ten year forecast. There's just a lot of great things that's coming from all of staff. Financially and our operational departments really coming together and.
Great. Thank you. On that note, thank you all for being engaged and thoughtful. Appreciate it.
Good meeting.
Thanks, Grace.